Phone and everyone that is on your computer, would you please mute yourself? Councilman Chaplinsky is kind of the keeper of the, of all things, technical tonight. And so just before we even open the meeting, I want to tell you that we are here for the duration. We will be here and we're here to listen. And the public hearing will begin right now. We are going to open up right now, if that's right. Are all the council people here? I have not seen, I have not seen, Chris, I guess, is on. Chris Pulis. Councilman Palmeri, are you on?
I'm here.
Oh, great. And Val, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Okay, we can get started then. Would you all just stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you, would you say the prayer for us, please?
Yes. Lord, may you continue to bless and keep Southington and her people. May you direct and lead the council to with all her endeavors and seek what is right and just for all people.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Chaplinsky?
Yes, here.
Call the roll, and then we're going to open up the public hearing. Go ahead.
Michael Del Santo?
Present.
Valerie DePaolo?
Here.
Jeff?
Tom Lombardi?
I'm here.
James Morelli?
Christopher Palmeri?
Here.
Christopher Pulis?
Here.
Victoria Triano?
I'm present. Thank you. We are going to open now the public hearing on the presence of the Christopher Columbus statue that is currently displayed outside the John Wykesel Municipal Center located at 196200 North Main Street in Southington. Before we begin, I would just want to let folks know the procedure and what we will be expecting tonight. If you are on your phone, you'll be speaking after the folks on the computer. It's just easier to work it that way. So if you're on your computer, all you need to do is raise your hand or let Mr. Chaplinsky know that you wish to speak, and he will put you in as your name becomes, as your name comes up. Those on the phone will follow that, and we'll get to everybody just with some patience. You will be allowed to speak at the public hearing the same way you can speak in public communication. Five minutes, and Clerk will, will be the timekeeper and call the time. When she designates that your time is over, your time is up. So please stop talking and allow someone else to come forward. We are very committed to being respectful to each other, and we would expect that from anyone who is addressing the council this evening. We're here to listen. It's your time, and it is not the time for us to engage you. Don't feel like we're being not listening. We are listening, but this is your time, and we want to make sure that we give you every minute you have. The last thing I want to say is that we did receive some letters past the time when the town hall closes at 4:30. Those letters that we received will be sent out to the council tomorrow morning, and we will have them tomorrow right away, tomorrow morning. And I believe that's it. Mr. Chaplinsky, do you have anything to add?
No, Madam Chair. If we're going into the public hearing, the only couple of things I would like to mention is that, as you mentioned, if the folks are logged on on their computer or their smartphone or tablet, that means we can see your name on the screen, so it's easy, it's easier for us to, to call your name and have you come up and speak. So what I would ask you to do is, if, if possible, in your chat box, if you can please just type in that I would like to speak. If you're having a problem doing that, then, you know, try to raise your hand, and we'll try to see you, and, you know, a council person will, will text in to me to say that they see somebody's raising their hand. And what I'll do is I'll unmute your, your specific computer, or you can unmute your own device, and then you can speak for five minutes. Once we're done with all the computers, smartphones, tablets, then we'll ask everybody to put those on mute, and then what we'll do is open all the phones up and allow people to speak on the phone. That's a little bit chaotic because we can't see names. So what we'll try to do is we'll try to invite, invite people to start talking, figure out who's speaking, and then I'll turn the microphones off everybody else, one at a time, so that we can hear what everybody's saying without an echo. I know that was a lot, Madam Chair, but hopefully everybody...
I think that's good. I do want to say that we received today, we received over 100 letters. We received 100 and, I believe, 124 letters during the course of the day. The others that came in after 4:30, we will forward them, as I said. Also, we received a petition with, with over 1,000 signatures, and these have been verified and validated through double-checking them. They are all from Southington residents. Only Southington residents will be allowed to speak tonight. Only Southington residents on, on anything they sign will be designated as verified town residents. So I just want everybody to know that. Okay, I'm ready to go. Are you ready, Mr. Chaplinsky?
Yes, Madam Chair. Right now, we have, we have Mr. Bob Brown, and then after Bob Brown's five minutes, Brian Corbino will be on deck. So, Mr. Brown, you unmute yourself? Excellent.
Can you hear me?
So name and address, Bob, just one.
Yep. My name is Robert Brown. I live at 587 Burritt Street, Plantsville, Connecticut, 06479. I did send a, apparently it was, I sent one yesterday, and I guess it didn't go through, but I sent one today after the 4:30 time. I would be glad to read it now, or I understand you have so many letters. If you would prefer to just read it, I'd be glad to do that also.
Bob, what we're going to do with the letters, we are going...
Do you have a preference?
...in the official minutes of the meeting, so everyone will get that. So I would, I think it would be good, you could read it yourself, but I would like to hear your heart, what you would like to address the council with.
Okay, I'll read my letter then. That's fine, yep.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but just because, because we do have so many people on, it would be great if the council people, and even you, Madam Chair, could put their phones on mute in between speaking. Thanks. Okay, Bob, the floor is yours.
My name is Bob Brown. I taught history in Southington schools for 41 years. I learned to share my thoughts on the Christopher Columbus statue standing in front of the municipal building. Let me start by making it very clear. I am on the Board of Education, but I am not speaking for the Board of Education. I'm speaking as an individual taxpayer and citizen. The Board of Ed has not taken any position on the statue, has not discussed the statue, and has never been asked about the statue. So we had nothing to do with any decision, and I'm not speaking for them. I also understand the difficult position you are in. No matter what you decide to do about the statue, a significant part of our town's population will not agree with you and not be happy with you. My wish is we can all maintain a civil dialogue as a decision is made and afterwards also. My wish is that people respectfully disagree if they do. They also hope you will lead by doing what you believe in your hearts is the right thing to do. When I was growing up in Brussels, we were taught that Columbus was a hero, that he was a courageous man who dared sail across the ocean and that he discovered America. We even sang a song about it. We never heard anything negative about that. Statues on public land serve two purposes. One is to honor our heroes, those people we, who did such great things that they deserve are honoring them. The second purpose is to capture our history and commemorate that. And I do believe we should not simply wipe out our history, but instead we should try to learn from it. I totally understand why Italian-Americans admire, even some later generations, might want to honor Columbus. He was, in their view, a courageous hero who played an important role in Europeans coming to America. And after all, Southington has a rich history of Italian-Americans making very positive to our great community. But times have changed. We have studied our history and discovered some disturbing information. These words come from Columbus himself, from his journals, thanks to research done by a Southington high school history teacher. I apologize for the graphic nature of what I'm about to say, but it is factual and is evidence you should consider when deciding the fate of the statue. It turns out Columbus captured and enslaved Native Americans and brought them to Europe as slaves. He cut off the hands of Native Americans who did not pay him enough tribute. He called for raping Native American women to control them and capturing nine- and 10-year-old Native American girls to be sold into sex slavery. The population of Hispaniola where he landed went from approximately 3 million when he arrived to virtually zero Native Americans in 60 years. Are those the actions of a man our community should be honoring? The actions of someone we want young people to admire and emulate and to look up to. Is this the best way to honor the many Italian-Americans who made very positive contributions to our town and country? So how do we commemorate our history? That's the other purpose of public statues and monuments. Perhaps we put such statues in a museum, something I would actually support on a national level. We could move it to a land, to the land of those who paid for the statue, and perhaps create and construct a new statue on public property that more positively reflects the history of our town and the contributions of different ethnic groups. How about a Statue of Liberty statue honoring many different ethnic and national groups who came to and contributed to this town? But that might not mention... Now, forward in six months with a Native American woman statue, would you be obligated to put that up also? We could place a plaque next to the present statue, explain both the positive and negative contributions of Columbus. We could create a second statue that somehow commemorates the many other groups who contribute to our town. We could leave the statue where it is and move on. It could simply be destroyed, which would not be my suggestion. Or we could find another Italian-American to honor instead. In conclusion, I would ask, how can we best use public land to honor heroes who represent positives from our past? Positive people who we wish our young people to aspire to be like? How can we respect the wishes of Southington residents? Thank you for listening and for considering all the options. I would be glad to, I would like this letter right to the record. I'd also be glad to serve in any committee you wish to form to investigate what to do about the statue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Madam Chair, we have, we have Brian Corbino is up next, and following Brian Corbino, Lawrence Klein.
Thank you.
Brian, are you able to take your phone off mute? Or your...
I'm here.
Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Brian Corbino. I live 167 Burwin Street in Southington. I've been a resident of Southington for 13 years. I'm not going to read the entirety of my, my letter into the record because it's already going to be there, but I am going to say that this debate is not about this statue. It's not about Christopher Columbus. It's about whether or not we should be allowed to have history at all. Events over the past few days have convinced me that this has nothing to do with Christopher Columbus and everything to do with simply destroying everything that has come before some arbitrary time. Over the course of the past couple of days, we've heard for demands that the Jefferson Memorial be destroyed. I'm not certain how that serves the best interests of history, but there it is. My argument is that the statue itself, warts and all, Columbus was a man. He did what he did. Does, does the statue act as a tribute to him, a remembrance? I don't think that that even matters. What matters is those who would remove it are doing so with ill intent. They're not doing it because they're hoping to elevate us or our history or our present or our future. They're doing so in the hopes of erasing the past so that they can pretend nothing bad has ever happened before, and we can move forward into some glorious future where everything is perfect. That's not going to happen because we're still made of meat, we're still flawed, and we're still going to mess everything up because that's what we do. Columbus did what he did when he did it. Whether you like it or not is irrelevant. It happened. Erasing the statue doesn't change what happened. It doesn't change the fact that we are here on this continent now. I have heard some people who have been making these arguments for removing the statues of, a year ago, we were told it was only of the Confederate statues that were erected in the South as part of the grand bargain at the end of the Civil War. It's since been transferred to getting rid of anybody who has had any sort of tangential relationship with the peculiar institution, as it was called then, of slavery. Who's next? We're going to suddenly have at some point 20 years hence, somebody will decide that something that John Wykesel did is no longer in keeping contemporary standards, and we have to remove his name from the municipal center. At what point do we stop? We either accept history, warts and all, and move on and learn from it, or we do ourselves to do even worse things in the future because we don't remember how bad we're capable of being. My argument is, if you want to put your statues up, fine, we can have that.
John Walker, mute or something.
All the background noise.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Sounds like somebody's phone fell over. Sorry about that, man. I just want to finish up with, I understand, there's people who say, well, the presence of this statue of Person offends me because Person did horrible things to my historical ancestors. And I can point to the fact that my Italian ancestors, who did not come to this country until the turn of the 20th century, came here, were rejected, denigrated, abused, and maltreated. And it happened. I'm still here. What was done to my ancestors is what put me here. And if we erase the past and pretend it never happened, we don't know how we got here. Forgetting is the highest crime against humanity we have. Don't forget.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have up next Lawrence Klein, and then Joan Hurley. Lawrence, you could take your computer off mute.
Are you guys ready for lunch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lawrence Klein, can you hear us?
I hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. The floor is yours.
Okay.
And we can see you too.
My name is Larry Klein. I live on Beechwood Drive. I've lived in Southington 49 years, and I'm a former educator, professor at CCNC, who educated and prepared teachers to teach, including many who came here to Southington and taught in Southington. Many of my former students have taught in Southington. So I'm approaching the council with comments about Columbus as an educator. And I know that the, the kids in school learn the history of Columbus. And the history of Columbus is not good. He did very many horrible things, he and his men, as mentioned by, earlier by another speaker. He actually engaged in extensive rapes with his men on women in places like the Bahamas, today is, it's called the Bahamas, and in Cuba, and other Caribbean places. He also committed sadistic murders, and he brought slaves back to his country. It was horrible, what he did. And to think that our kids here in Southington learn this history, and then I wonder what they think when they go downtown and look at that statue, and at the very least, I think they're puzzled. Why is that statue here in view of the history of what this man and his men did? So I want to raise this perspective to the, to the council to think about. To me, it's not a matter of tearing the statue down or removing history. I want the council to think about the question, why should the statue stay up? Why should the statue stay up when our kids graduate from high school knowing the history, the sordid, horrible history about Columbus, and they see this statue downtown? Why should, you know, what do they think? Also, very quickly, in New Britain, several years ago, there was an issue like this that came up over Columbus, in which the Scandinavians in New Britain got fought against the Italian-Americans. It was a big issue, very, a lot of acrimony, a lot of anger, because the fact is that the Vikings were really in America way before Christopher Columbus. To have that statue saying that he discovered America, which is absolutely false, because the Vikings did discover America. We even have physical evidence of this on the East Coast, up towards Canada. So I just want to introduce that aspect, these considerations to the council. As an educator, it makes no sense to me to keep that statue up when we graduate kids who know this bad history about Christopher Columbus. Thank you.
Okay, up next, Larry, if you just put your phone, your computer on mute, that'd be great, and Joan Hurley, you could take and unmute yourself. The floor is yours.
Close it?
Please.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, I agree with what someone said earlier, strong, healthy conversations about history and how to move forward in our country so that we are celebrating all of our background stories.
You guys put me open. Mike, you on mute?
Hi, Mr. Pocock, we're going to put you on mute.
History hasn't been taught accurately without the use of primary documents or of all the actions and consequences of historical figures and events. It's simply a whitewashing of history, a denial of what our history actually is. I believe that we must elevate beings and our actions we would want to exemplify and emulate. To have a statue during Columbus disregards his inhumanity as well as handled... Not taught until recently, but rather either ignored or denied. And that message is a narrative that we need to look at. The fact that we are putting Columbus on a pedestal and then stating these are our values, it becomes very exclusive as to who is included in that celebration and who is not. I think it perpetuates...
Hi, I'm sorry. Your connection doesn't seem to be working very well.
Madam Chair, there's a gentleman that's making a lot of noise. He's trying to cover his computer screen with a piece of paper, and we're hearing everything. If you could just mute your phones, folks, it's just when, every time you're trying to cover your, your computer screen with that piece of paper, we can't hear anything. All we can hear is you trying to, there you go. Thank you.
Apologize. John Walker, if you can do us a favor and just keep your computer on mute, that'd be great.
Mute.
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. If everybody can be, it'd be extremely helpful if everybody who's on a computer can be cognizant of their microphones. Ms. Hurley, I apologize. Maybe the, the last handful of sentences, it was a little jumbled. I think a little bit was background noise, and I think your connection was also a little tough. So did you want to reemphasize some of the points you were making?
Sure. Um, can you tell me where you last heard me speak?
I would say about halfway through, you started to, your connection seemed to have started to scramble a little bit.
Okay. Um, I do think that I think of the statue as, it hasn't been taught accurately without the use of primary documents or a full accounting of all the consequences of historical figures or events. It is simply a whitewashing of history. And we must elevate human beings in our American history whose actions we would want to exemplify. To have a statue in Columbus disregards his humanity as well as the profound suffering and ultimate genocide of Native peoples throughout the Americas. I feel that to leave the statue on public, public property as is glorifies a history not taught, but rather ignored, denied. And I do think that, that the removal of the statue is certainly going to give an opportunity for accurate history to be taught. I do think that we need to look at the narrative that we're putting out. We can't put people in our history on principles and state that these are our values when what was done perpetuated the dehumanizing process, which disproportionately perpetuated violence and, and later on discriminatory legislation against Black and Indigenous people of color. And I feel the Christopher Columbus statue should be moved to private property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appreciate you doubling back and doing that again. Okay, we have up next Dylan Coleman, and then after Dylan, Dori Perugini.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. All right. I will try and fit this in. I tried to get this as close to five minutes as possible. I'll, I'll get right to the, the issue. So what I would like to say right now is in response to a petition posted on chance.org titled, "Remove the Christopher Columbus Statue." I believe the sentiment in this post is endemic of a massive failure of the education system in our country. We are seeing it endlessly pervade our culture. The main crux of this argument posed in this petition, at least the part I would like to most aggressively direct, is summed up in this paragraph. End quote. "Christopher Columbus was a cruel man who committed crimes against indigenous peoples. He enslaved the Native people of the West Indies and was a brutaler. Those who didn't comply to his will were murdered. Should discourage rebellion, Columbus ordered the murder of natives and would have their dismembered bodies paraded through the streets." End quote. This statement is not only historically inaccurate, but the exact opposite of the kind of man that Christopher Columbus was. I would like to think myself an eloquent writer, but I'd rather quote an educational talk given by a political commentator, author, and Yale history graduate, Michael Knowles, at the Notre Dame University, titled, "Christopher Columbus, Hero Not Heathen." For the remainder of my time, I would like to share just exactly who Columbus was, as shared from Mr. Knowles's speech, after which I hope you will watch the entire lecture on YouTube. Christopher Columbus was a transnational, devoutly Christian, illiterate of low birth, autodidact, and the greatest navigator of his age. He spent more than a decade trying to convince... Christopher Columbus was a transnational, devoutly Christian, illiterate of low birth, autodidact, and the greatest navigator of his age. He spent more than a decade trying to fund his impossibly ambitious mission. He played the single most important role in the founding of America. Upon finally embarking on the journey, leading his men and ship with little to no navigational tools and quashing two separate mutinies, Columbus landed in the Bahamas in October 12th in 1492. Upon landing, Columbus and his men encountered the naked tiny islanders called the Taínos. Columbus ordered all of his men with strict instructions that none of the islanders were to be harmed or mistreated in any way. The natives were covered in wounds and it was soon discovered that there were less peaceful tribes on the island. There are two other tribes, there were, other tribes were known for two things, elegant cotton rugs and eating people. They also found that these same tribes babies to be a delicacy. Upon establishing the first Spanish settlement, it was quickly almost entirely burned to the ground by these very tribes, and scores of Spanishmen were killed. The men of the settlement wanted to take revenge upon the tribes, but Christopher Columbus showed restraint and forbade it. Later, a large group of Spaniards were ambushed, beaten, and many were killed. The Spanish captured several perpetrators and one of them put to death. Again, Columbus intervened on their behalf and did not allow this to happen. Stanford professor Carol Delaney points out just how ludicrous the claims of tyranny are of Columbus. She states that these revisionists of history are blaming him for things he did not do, things that were done by people who came after him or by those around him who he had no control over. She continues that in all of his writings, he was always on the side of the natives. He did not regard the natives as a feeble, but wrote of them as fellow human beings. In fact, he adopted a young Native American boy after the boy's father had passed away, a man who was a native born and a dear friend of Columbus. Columbus was also revered by upstanding of that time. Bartolome de la. Is that time?
We had an interruption.
All right. No problem. I've seen that's a pattern. And so Bartolome de las Casas, the first resident bishop of the Americas, the most ardent defender of the indigenous people of the islands, and who was against the slavery and brutality done to the Spanish, admired Columbus to his dying day. Now to the crux of the argument. False claims presented by the petition in question originated from a document written by a man named Francis Bobadilla. In this document, Francis claims that Columbus was someone who tortured slaves and was a cruel, violent man. These are some pretty lofty claims, but there is one humongous problem. Francisco Bobadilla was Columbus's chief political rival and wrote these things with the sole purpose of usurping power in the West Indies for himself. Columbus spent years of his life refuting this document as libel and turned down lucrative contri, the Spanish crown that did not correct these baseless claims. In the end, the Spanish crown went along with the ridiculous claims to oust Columbus, thus getting out of the large amount of money they owed Columbus for his efforts in discovering the New World. The crimes stated in this false document were in reference to other Spanish settlers that treated the natives with ill intent. In regard to these men, Columbus wrote, "I take my oath that a number of men have gone to the Indies that did not deserve water in the sight of God and of the world." Again, Columbus takes the side of the innocent people of this land. Now, as much as it disgusts me that people of this great town and state would want to get rid of the memory of such a great man, this whole situation lends itself to a deeper, much darker issue. This whole thing really highlights how arrogant it is to cast dispersions at the past, like Columbus's 1400s through a 21st century lens. We malign our forebears, and it must be nice to sit in the freest, most prosperous, most charitable country the world has ever known, and from the position of totally unmerited luxury slander the men and women who made it possible. I believe Bernard of Chandra summed it up perfectly in the year 1159. He was comparing the scholars of that time to the ancient scholars of Greece and Rome. He said the current scholars were like short men perched on the shoulders of giants. They see more and farther than the ancient scholars, not because they have keener vision or greater height, but because they are lifted up and borne aloft on their gigantic stature. Our current culture spits down on some of the greatest people of history, thinking that they would have held the same exact values hundreds of years ago. You might think, well, it's just one statue, this might appease the.
Dylan, just to interrupt, I know you got interrupted a couple times, but do you think you can wrap in like 10, 10 seconds?
Absolutely, absolutely. I can, okay, yep. I'll just, I'll end with one quote. It's from the book 1984 by George Orwell. Every record has been destroyed or falsified, every book rewritten, every picture has been repainted, every statue and street rebuilding has been renamed, every date has been altered, and the process is continuing day by day, minute by minute. History has stopped, nothing exists except the endless present in which the party is always right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dylan, for wrapping that. Apologies for the interruption.
No, no problem.
We've got 144 on today, so.
I got it, I got it, man. Thank you.
Okay, so after Dylan, I think it's Dory Perugini. Hopefully, Dory, I pronounced your last name correctly.
You did. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak today. I did have some prepared remarks, but after hearing that last speech, I'm gonna kind of just speak from my heart here. First, I'd like to say that as myself, a descendant of the Taínos people, I am livid that they would be characterized as people known for two things, eating babies as a delicacy and using weaving cotton rugs. And that right there demonstrates why this statue is more than just a statue, because it allows this pervasive and dangerous narrative, native people are dangerous people who eat babies. It's, that's my history. That is, as a Puerto Rican person and a descendant of Taínos people.
I'm sorry, Dory.
Statue.
I apologize, only because I know this is close to you, and normally we don't allow this, but the gentleman who spoke, you can't see it, but he typed in, he said, he was, he apologizes and maybe it was misunderstood, but he said that they were victims of that. So apologies.
You know, I.
You can't see the text he's popping up, so apologies.
I don't really care about what he has to say. I would encourage the council, I have written letters, and I have, you know, I hear somebody just.
Give me one second to try to, give me one second to try to mute that. Hi, Orregio, I apologize, I'm gonna have, Orregio, we're gonna put you on mute. Unfortunately, you were sharing your screen and we had to exit you from the meeting last time, so if you don't mind, please keep yourself on mute and don't share your screen. All right, Dory, my apologies.
That's okay. So yeah, unfortunately, this just really shows why this statue is more than a statue, because me, myself, as a descendant of the people that Columbus conquered, have to walk by that statue every time I come to the Board of Education, every time I want to speak to the town council, with the exception of this beautiful online platform, I need to be remembered of who I, reminded of who I am in this society and what this society views as me as a person. And not only me, but descendants of Taínos people and other indigenous people like myself. So I encourage the town council, back in 2017, I spoke about this before the statue went up. I submitted a petition signed by over 200 Southington residents, verified Southington residents that were opposed to the statue, that still exist today. I know that there are more petitions out there. And I just want to encourage the town council to not listen even to other historians who have spoken about this, but take the time to read Columbus's own diaries, as I have. I'm a PhD student and have read Columbus's own diaries in the original language. And I encourage you all to do that, so you can really see what kind of man he was, and if that actually aligns with the values of Southington. Because me, I do not believe that. I know that we are a better community than that, and I hope you can hear how upset I am in my voice that somebody in my community would characterize people in that way, and that is what this monument represents to me. Every time I walk in to my place of government, a feeling of not being welcomed and a feeling of just oppression. And with that, thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you so much, Dory. Appreciate that. Let's see, we have, I know I typed this in a little bit earlier. And very, very much appreciate everybody being, being patient. A lot of people in managing this is, is difficult. Okay, so we did Dorothy, Christina Volpe, you're up next, and after Christina, we have Michael Krasinski, and then Daniel Hart. So if I forget those, and I'm looking for them in the list here, please let me know. So Christina, the floor is yours. Thank you, Dory.
Thank you very much to all of the respected town council members. My name is Christina Volpe. I live at 161 Oakland Road, 10. And many of you know that I am an elected planning and zoning commissioner, but I am here tonight representing myself as a citizen and as a historian. I graduated in 2009 from S H S, and now I went to the American University of Rome in Italy. Columbus is not a huge figure over there, I'll tell you right now. I have a BA in history and an MA in public history. I've also read some primary sources from Columbus's own hand, and that stuff is pretty brutal, and it is 1492, and we could easily say whatever. But, but we're a little bit more conscious in that today, and I do want to read some excerpts from the letter that I sent into you to each of the town council members. Now, I want to remind everybody that Columbus Day became a holiday in 1893 after President Harrison elected to do that, after 11 Italians were lynched in New Orleans. It wasn't always a time in this country where Italians were as accepted as they are now, and I really think we need to be reminded of that, especially in our own town. In 1903, the Waterbury Democrat reported that there were walkouts from our local factories because Italians were being hired in them. And that's not just one, it found countless, and I'm sure if we go back into the Southington Phoenix, we would see that too. And I did some research about the first four Italians that came here before 1910, before the founding of the Sons of Italy, before Unico, and those people had a way more tumultuous journey than Christopher Columbus did. If you consider the amount of wealth that he had with him on that journey, the amount of help that he had with him compared to these immigrants who choose to leave their own country during their own country's unification. I'll wait for the background noise to die down.
All right, Christina, give me one second there.
Appreciate it.
Everybody can check their microphones, please, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Hang on one second.
Sure.
Kelly Cameron, please mute your mic.
Thank you. So as I was saying, our own ancestors here in this town in 1880 had a far more difficult journey than the one that we've chosen to commemorate. And I get it, I get why we choose to commemorate it, but I just kind of hoped my entire life living in this town that we would be a little different. We have this wonderful Italian festival, we have so many legacy names, and yet I can't tell you where many of them came from. My, my own family came here in the 1970s, and not a lot of people know this, but my dad and uncle were born in Austria. So this isn't even really my fight to, but I really think that Southington has a unique history worth commemorating. And so I propose that if we don't take down the Columbus statue, we have to contextualize it for the people that were here before us. Because what are you teaching us? What are you teaching us with a statue to a general man? You know how insignificant Columbus is now? The fact that every town with Italian ancestors has one, we just walk by them. We don't even see them anymore. They're not even relevant. So it makes me wonder, was it put up to satisfy someone's ego in the present? Because you're surely not preserving your family's legacy in the past. We have names sitting on this council that deserve statues more than Christopher Columbus deserves a statue, in my opinion, because I know how hard we all work for our community. So why would we do something so general, so like everybody else, that eventually they're just gonna walk by it? Because there have been other Italians. There was a brick making business here in 1886 before many of the surrounding areas. The closest other one I could find was in Waterbury, and the other one was in Middletown, 1886. And they got that business from the Clark Brothers. There is a legacy here in this town that paved the way for your ancestors to come here, and you do then like that with Columbus? The most general, the most basic person to put a statue above, especially knowing all we know, right? We can sit here and just say, okay, it was 1492, he was great, but we know what we know now. So we're just gonna go ahead and be like everybody else? If you don't decide to take down or remove the statue to contextualize it, vergogneti, vergogneti, shame on you. Because you're doing something wrong by your ancestors that made it able for you to be here. You want to talk about how people want to erase history? The, the reason why Columbus is there is because Italians were being told that they were less than. They had to put up a statue, they had to find a way, and at the time, Columbus was the best figure for them to do it. But where are we now? What do we have now? Look at our town. And what are you teaching my daughter, fourth grade at DES, and what does she know of our Italian heritage? I have to take her over there to teach her something, when I should be able to take her to a monument in our town, read all the legacy names that made this place great. And I'm sure so many of you, history, because I'd love to learn it, but you should be teaching us that. You're failing the next generation by putting up just another basic statue of Columbus. You're failing the next generation by just leaving it there, because after you're gone, they're not gonna remember what you did. They're not gonna, we don't even remember. Your ancestors buried in St. Thomas in Oak Hill are not being commemorated, you have forgotten them and forsaken them. Because to say Christopher Columbo, you are him, we are all him, do right by us. Thank you.
Christina, you were interrupted a couple times. Did you need any more, a few extra seconds?
No, I severely hope that I got my point across, that this memorial is shameful to all of our Italian-American ancestors that fought so hard to be here, and that vergogneti means shame in Italian on all of us who do not remediate that fact.
Thank you, Christina.
You're welcome.
Michael Krasinski's up next.
Hi, Paul, thank you. So I'm a Southington resident, I've been here about 16 years. And so the points I want to get across are, first of all, the statue was put up, to my knowledge, in 2017. It had a unanimous approval of the town council, so there were no objections. So as far as, you know, I'm concerned, this is settled business. No one spoke against the project at the time, to my knowledge. There was agreement to put up the municipal center, some people are talking about moving it elsewhere, but that's not the intent. When the statue was originally, you know, funded, the idea was to put up the municipal center, so moving it somewhere else goes against the will of the council and the people who funded the project. The money's already been spent. Columbus is a symbol of Southington's Italian heritage. I'm not Italian, but it doesn't matter if you're Italian or not. The Italian community or members of it decided to use Columbus to honor them, and that's their decision. The previous caller was, you know, indicating, well, there's other Italian figures who should be celebrated. Sure, they should be. Just because Columbus is there does not mean that other statues, monuments, other things can't be done. You can celebrate multiple people. If this statue is taken down, I don't know where this ends. Do we begin removing anything in town because some people offended by it? It's a slippery slope. How about the statues of Washington, Jefferson, Mount Rushmore, et cetera? Maybe they're not in Southington, but they're elsewhere, so we start tearing all of that down? Where does it end? How about the Bradley Barnes Museum? Someone's gonna dig up something on him, I'm sure, so why don't we tear down his museum too? You know, it seems like this stuff doesn't end. Most significant historical figures have done both good and bad. Columbus is the same way. Kennedy, you name it, people do good and bad because they're human. To allow some people to attempt to rewrite history by just allowing celebrations of those who are deemed worthy by the politically correct crowd at the time is not helpful to understanding our past. Removing the statue just promotes more tearing down of history? Let's learn our past, try to hide it. So some good stuff about Columbus. He carried out four voyages to the New World between 1492 and 1504. These four voyages are incredibly significant in the history of the world. They marked the beginning of European exploration in the New World and led to other major events. Yes, Columbus didn't land in North America, but landed in the Bahamas and, you know, in South America, so those are the Americas. Columbus's arrival in 1492 marked the first recorded visit by Europeans to the area. Columbus kept a journal of his voyage, and upon returning home, he spread news of his findings, which fundamentally altered the world. In fact, Columbus had written a letter while still aboard the ships on the return trip home, which was later published, and spread news of the voyage throughout the rest of Europe. In the letter, he discusses findings in wealth and people, and inspired others to follow in his footsteps. His second voyage to the New World in 1493 led to the Colombian exchange. The cargo and people that Columbus brought with him on the second voyage started a grand exchange and revolution between the New World and the Old World that would alter the world forever, because he had brought with him seeds, plants, livestock, that were not originally occurring in the New World. The major exchange between the two worlds centered on the exchange of plants, animals, and also diseases. Although the exchange began with Christopher Columbus, it continued and developed the remaining years of the Age of Exploration. Ultimately, the Colombian exchange impacted the social and cultural makeup of both sides of the Atlantic and dramatically impacted the people living in these regions. His discoveries changed the lives of both Europeans and the peoples of the Americas. Columbus had a profound impact on the course of history and directly led to many aspects of our modern lives. A few other things, Columbus was a great explorer, and he showed incredible determination in the Atlantic in those four trips he made, in ships that were very dangerous, you know, for the time, not like modern ships that we have now. These are dangerous voyages. He was a brave individual. So in summation, you know, this is, I would say, business that's been decided, the statue is there, we can learn from it. I see no reason to take it down. I see no reason to take it down. And if other people want to honor others from Italian history or whatever in the town, that's great, but that doesn't mean we need to take down Columbus. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, Michael. Up next is Daniel Hart. I think your golf game was better than mine the other day.
I don't know about that, but.
Always good to see you.
So I'm Dan Hart, I live at 256 Pacer Lane in Plansville. I'm speaking as an individual citizen. I have some prepared remarks. Southington's Columbus Monument is not a symbol that we want front and center representing the values of our town. I was listening to a song the other day about a past relationship and one person moved away and comes back home but realizes she's grown and changed while those who have stayed behind have not. And I think this is a great analogy for our relationship today with Columbus. Many of us of a certain age remember as schoolchildren learning about the voyages of Columbus, the Nina, the Pinta, the Santa Maria, the Age of Discovery, the conquistadors, explorers paving the way for a new world. Some of us may have even learned Columbus thought he was in India and so he named the people that he contacted Indians and the name stuck. Our nation's high regard credited Columbus by naming its capital after him and George Washington. Washington, the District of Columbia. The voyages of Columbus changed the world and that's deserving of study and recognition. But for many of us, that's where the relationship ends. That's about all the history we know. But just like the song I heard, there's more to the life of Columbus. Our knowledge of Columbus has grown. Our collective consciousness has been reawakened. For years, Columbus Day has been debated and in some places it's been recast as Day of Culture or Indigenous Peoples' Day. Fast forward to events today in 2020. Buffalo, New York, San Francisco and Sacramento, California, Camden and Trenton, New Jersey, to name just a very few. By one count, there have been over 30 cities and towns who have removed Columbus monuments in just the last few weeks. And some are right here in Connecticut. Hartford, New Haven, Middletown, Norwalk, Norwich, Waterbury, Bridgeport, New London. One of the key lyrics in that song goes, "All these changes taking place, but I changed by not changing at all." I don't want that song lyric to apply to Southington. I don't want the city of progress to fail to live up to its name by not changing at all. Other Connecticut towns have taken action. Southington's Columbus Monument does not belong on officially sanctioned public space. Community groups won the Southington Town Council approval in 2015, followed by the installation of the Columbus Monument in 2017 despite protests. I'm glad you all think it's time to listen more carefully to these protesters because we need to reevaluate what our town stands for and what message a Columbus monument placed outside our town offices is sending. Jefferson said there must be a wall of separation between church and state. Influential institutions, whether they be religious or private, should not have an outside say in what gets placed in the public space, especially as highly visible as in front of our municipal center. The message that the Columbus Monument sends is this. Some people in this town must revere Columbus, that he symbolizes Italian pride, that some Italian-Americans felt discrimination but found a common link with others in admiring and celebrating Columbus. The message that the Columbus Monument also sends is this. Some people in this town must not realize that he started the transatlantic slave trade, that even Queen Isabella was horrified that the Admiral of the Ocean and Sea brought 500 captured natives to be sold as slaves and the queen later ordered them returned under penalty of death. Some people don't realize that for his next voyage, Columbus brought back what was brought back himself to Spain and changed due to the brutality he allowed to be inflicted on both native people and his fellow crewmen, that the court of Ferdinand and Isabella forever stripped him of his titles of Admiral and vice versa. Columbus was, to say the least, controversial even in his own time. I'll finish with this. The message that Southington's Columbus Monument sends to a prospective resident, to a prospective employee who wants to work here, perhaps to teach here, is this. You are about to enter a place that doesn't fully realize diverse thought and opinion. Only one view of history is welcome. To the 2020 Town Council of Southington, please do not let this message stand. Please do not let the Columbus Monument upon public space any longer and do not let only one view of history prevail here. Do not get left behind like the person in that song who says, "I changed by not changing at all." Please look at the world around us. Voices are crying out for more sensitivity to diversity, for social justice, and for a greater consideration of others' viewpoints. Be on the right side of history. Be the city of progress, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, up next is Caitlin.
Hi, Caitlin Gelfand, I live on Cloverdale Road in Southington. I think it's been addressed, the extremely negative history of Christopher Columbus. So I'll skip those comments I had prepared exactly on that. Because to me, I think this issue is more about having this statue on town property and whether or not this represents our town and our collective human values. It is my hope as a citizen of Southington that the council members would strive to represent all members of our town to be aware of the varying backgrounds, religious ethnicities and more that are alive and well here. However, just at the beginning of this meeting, here I am not feeling at all represented by this Christian prayer. It tells me and a lot of people like me that no one will work for me, that no one in, as the elected officials of Southington, will work to represent me and my Jewish family and any other non-Christian people that live here. I bring up the example of this prayer because this small act at our meetings immediately tells people that you don't work for them. I think it's a broader issue of representation in this town to have this statue here exactly as I think it was Christina said, or someone said, "That walk past this statue every time I have to go do town business says, not you, we don't care about you because this is not your issue." So I think having this statue, it tells people that you only care to represent a few of us by removing the statue from town property. Place it somewhere else, take it down, whichever it ends up being. It would send a message to all of your citizens that you as our elected officials are listening to all of us, not some of us. Not some of us who are the squeaky wheels necessarily. Not some of us who feel maybe a little more of a right to this town than others because that in itself is the problem. I live here too, I would also like to be represented and I do not feel that way. And the Columbus statue is definitely of that. So I shortened myself a little bit. I think to reiterate all of the, you know, negativity of Christopher Columbus is not necessarily what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to tell you that Christopher Columbus does not represent this town. So what is the point of having him here in this town? He never set foot here. He didn't make our town a better place. I would choose the Italians like Christina said instead. I just think it's unnecessary to put in everyone's face Italians first here. That's all I would like to say about that.
Thank you, Caitlin, appreciate the comments. Okay, up next is Megan, I'm sorry, it's Neely?
Neely, yep. Hi, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. There's been a lot of focus on the history surrounding Columbus. I kind of want to go and tell an anecdotal story that kind of relates to the fact about the impact of the statue on public land. So back in late 2017, I was bringing my three-year-old, my son who was three at the time, into the municipal building to pay his school tuition. At the time, he was a community peer in the town's public precinct. He would go there every month during the beginning of the year to pay his tuition. So on that particular day, and my son noticed the statue positioned to the right of the entryway and he said, "Mama, who is that?" So I explained to my three-year-old who Christopher Columbus was and gave a brief, appropriate synopsis with my thoughts kind of surrounding this historical figure. However, no matter what I told my son about Columbus, the link between him and the institution that provides his education was made and will forever be made. Luckily, at that point when he questioned it, he was only three and it kind of went in one ear and out the other. But then what happens now when he's six and he goes to the municipal building with me to pick up his Chromebook? And then what happens maybe when he's 10 and his artwork is displayed in the hall upstairs and he comes with me again and sees it? Or then maybe at age 15, he comes and he sees Columbus again. You know, we go to the municipal building for some other, other reason. And the point I'm making is that someone, you know, very accurately said, "Our kids are being taught these, they're going to know more, they're going to have more information than we ever..." And so as a result, they're going to always have to, there's always going to be a disconnect between what they learn in school and what they see venerated in a public space that is connected to their education. Our children are always watching, they make connections, they learn from us. What's right, what's wrong? What do we give a pass to in the name of history? What do we build a statue to? We know better and we must do better. I think people raise money and they, and they put up a statue and they're in their own space, that's one thing. But what we put in public spaces sends a greater message, not just to our children, but to the, the community in general. So I would strongly urge people to strongly consider removal of the statue from public. Thank you.
Okay, Megan, thank you so much. Alicia Novi.
Hi.
Hi, Alicia.
My name's Alicia Novi, I live at 41 Hill Street. I am currently the Chairwoman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am not here speaking in that capacity tonight, I'm here speaking as a private citizen. I would like to address two things. I will leave the historical argument to the people who have come before me and those will probably come after me. However, I would like to address two things, both of which I have sent letters about. The first was remarks made on Facebook about people who did not come out and make statements at the original meeting in 2015. Actually, it was quoted as two meetings in 2015. And we were compared to the people who did not, who stood by and watched George Floyd die, the, the other officers at the scene. There was a retraction of the, the two, the two meetings that were mentioned to one meeting. However, there was not an apology for comparing people who didn't speak at a single public meeting with very little prior knowledge of this being raised to somebody who assisted in the murder of an individual. This would have been better, and as I'm, now I'm going to go into my lawyer hat, this would have been better being compared to somebody who chose to jadwalk. Because you could do the right thing and come to that meeting, but you didn't. And that's okay, that's your civic job. It should have been compared to somebody who should have crossed at the crosswalk but chose instead to cross somewhere else. Not somebody who stood by and watched as somebody committed murder. There's a very large difference there. And I don't think that the town council member who made those comments has apologized for that and that I have a problem with, especially from a legal point of view because she compared us to murderers or people who assisted in murder and that's a problem. The second thing I'd like to say is a legal standpoint about the fact that we now have a privately funded statue living on public land. You have accepted two-for-two statues. If anybody else were to come before you, say the Black Lives Matter folks wanted to put up a monument to Martin Luther King on town property and you deny them, you will be denying one of three. And say they take you to court, you might have to pay their legal fees if they win. There's a very large chance they're going to win because you have allowed every other statue to go up that has come before us. And you'll have to then take care of that statue. What's to say that 10 more people don't come along and want statues to go up on town property? Just like the, the current one for Christopher Columbus. You may end up having to care for 10 more statues. It will have an ever-increasing budget for landscaping around those 10 statues because you started with one statue that you decided to allow to go onto public land that was funded privately and now you care for and could actually be considered town property because you are upkeeping the statue, you are continuing to make sure that the landscaping is there year after year. It could be taken as town property now. I feel that you should, at the least, remove this statue. So therefore, in the future, any other person who comes along, you can say no to them as well. And you will have a legal basis for the argument of, no, we do not want your statue up. They can move the statue to a private place, they can keep it, they can love and respect Christopher Columbus on their private land. However, they shouldn't be doing it on public land. And if they do allow it to stay, then you will need to allow every statue that comes after. Or you may have legal bills and more bills for landscaping. Thank you for listening.
Sorry, thank you, Alicia, I was unmuted, appreciate that. Now we have, is it Daniel Stump?
Yes, hello?
Hi, Daniel, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm a town resident, I live in Holly Hill Drive. And, and I'm a recent graduate of college and very disturbed about the spread of this type of ideology of carrying down statues. And I think it's important that we know where this ideology comes from. It comes from Karl Marx, who viewed history as a binary struggle between the working-class proletariat and the owners and the means of production of bourgeoisie. The proletariat were the heroes and the bourgeoisie the villains in Marx's metanarrative. Being the heroes, there was nothing the proletariat could do wrong. Everything was justified, even the violent killing of the villainous bourgeoisie. In the same way, nothing the bourgeoisie could do but subservise themselves to the proletariat could ever justify their owning of successful businesses. And if they did not subserviate, they were to be killed, raped, exiled, what have you. What resulted from this worldview? Millions dead in Russia in the Red Scare, millions dead in China under the Cultural Revolution, millions dead in Cambodia under the Khmer Rouge, similar pictures in Cuba, Angola, and Venezuela. Today, the oppress, today the categories of the oppressors and the oppressed are today's bourgeoisie and proletariat. The oppressed are minority groups, women, LGBTQ, et cetera. And the oppressors are white people, in particular, white males. The problem with this worldview is that a binary stratification is much too simplistic for such a complex structure such as urban society. Oftentimes, the criteria that distinguishes a person as an oppressor can oftentimes be attributed to the people we call the oppressed. For instance, Christopher Columbus did order the killing of Native Americans. But likewise, Native Americans killed and attacked many of the new settlers, as did they neighboring tribes. Violence is not something, something that separates Columbus from everyone else. His bravery is. I hear a lot of people talking about the, how to tell history from all sides. Well, there's another side that hasn't been addressed. The story of Columbus is often shorted. He was a greedy European looking for new ways to get rich. But the reasons for Columbus setting sail are much different than that. Europe in the 15th century was in desperate straits. It was far from being a power on the world stage and had been dominated by Middle Eastern powers for centuries. 1492, the year that Columbus set sail, was also the first year that Spain had finally been liberated from its Muslim conquerors. European slaves, mostly from Italy and Spain, were still being taken by the Barbary Pirates in the Mediterranean and the Ottoman Empire had just captured Byzantium, sealing off the Hellspot, the main trading route for Europe and Asia. Being, in this context, Columbus set sail and ordered a free Europe from strangulation by the conquering Middle East powers. In this narrative, Columbus is a hero that saved Europe and discovered America. And in reality, he was a hero and he did discover America. You must look at history from all angles, not just the narrow, politically convenient angle. Is Columbus a hero worth remembering? Yes, the story of America cannot be told without Columbus. His bravery and valor saved Western civilization and helped it spread throughout the globe. That cultural diffusion brought with it private property rights, modern medicine, separation of church and state, individual freedom, and America herself. I'd like to end by saying to the town council, "Do not be washed away by the tides of the moment and in your haste, wipe this city clean of a people's proud symbol forever. Instead, let Southington be an example of an indomitable will to stand up for its heritage and its community." Thank you.
Okay. Daniel, thank you. I'll remind everybody to keep phones on mute. Daniel, thank you. Gloria Brown, you're up next.
Thank you. Much negative information about Christopher Columbus has come to light since the town council voted to allow the statue of Columbus to be placed in front of the municipal center. Many of us who are older were taught that Columbus was a hero. But it turns out he was far from being a hero. As we've heard from several speakers this evening, his mistreatment of native peoples cannot be ignored. Urge the members of the town council to remove the statue from public property and return it. and return it to the groups that funded it to be placed in a more appropriate place. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra.
Good evening, everyone. So, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we have a little bit of an echo. We'll see if there's some background.
That's from Gloria. Gloria. Sorry Gloria. If you meet yourself, I'll be fine. Okay. Um, so for the first time today, I am not here to represent myself, um, as a family or a political campaign. I'm actually today representing thirteen Jewish families in town. And I hope that would be all right with the town council if I just address my thoughts.
Yeah, I think you could just give your, your name and address for the record.
It's Alexandra Anderson. We are at six five nine Prospect Street, Plansville, Connecticut. Um, so today I am not concerned about Columbus. I'm about something else. Something that me, my family and our friends have talked about and that is an idea. Um, the idea is not of Columbus. It is the one of a journey. And the idea of a journey, just like the idea of the free markets and the capital law, law is wholly in Jewish faith in many ways. So I wanted to talk about how we view it in hopes that the community can understand it just a little bit better. In Jewish faith, we have two levels of planes of existence of a man. Just you and me and the town counselors. Uh, the first plane of existence is the physical, uh, in which case any person can commit sins or can commit good deeds. Um, and that's the physical level in which we all operate. And then there is the second level that every person is capable of, which is the divine. The divine in the world is the concept of a journey. In cases of Christopher Columbus, the compass and the journey itself is holy in many ways. That is what we symbolize as an idea of America. So when I hear people talk about Columbus as a person and then Columbus as a symbol and they are not able to separate the two, it is disturbing to me of why they cannot do that in my faith. Without in idolatry, which is basically putting up statues of people. Uh, which is completely okay with me if we remove Columbus, uh, but the journey, the journey to the new world has to be preserved in some way. I don't necessarily care if it's preserved through Columbus or it is preserved through the Jewish letters or it is preserved through the Christian symbols or how it is preserved. The journey has to stay in town. Columbus's journey has opened up Columbus Exchange of Trade. It is a whole notion in many ways. It is a notion that is not part of a Western civilization, but it is a part of America. And I hope that people can understand why preserving symbols of individuals that have connected to sort of divine and meaningful symbolic concepts is important to keep in town. I would recommend the town, no matter what they do, what our government does, to preserve this symbol of journey that has discovered America and dismiss the narrative that currently exists that is trying to paint United States as a slavery racist based country in line with Project sixteen nineteen. That is all that I have to say. This is just something for folks to think about. It's a very unique Jewish perspective. But I am very much appreciating the fact that I got my few minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alexandra. Appreciate that. Uh, up next we have, uh, Richard Cooper.
Okay, hello everyone. Uh, Richard Cooper, seventy-nine Barbara Lane.
Hi, Richard. If it's possible to turn your microphone up or maybe get closer to your microphone, that would be better. We can very faintly hear you.
Oh boy. Um, you can, can you hear me okay? Cause I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to turn it up much louder than this.
Yep, just stay close to the microphone.
All right, let me, let me try just moving it to my mouth.
That's better like that, yeah.
I have like a headset on. Um, I don't really have any prepared statements, but I did just want to say a few things. Um, I was just for the record, get this out of, out of the way. I am someone to see the statue off of public property. You know, go to private property ideally. So the people who originally paid for it and all of that, you know, effort doesn't go entirely to waste. I also wish that this culture of shaming would stop. Um, whether you are for the statue or against the statue, you know, that's your opinion. And your right to your opinion is what makes this country so great. Um, so no one should be ashamed, you know, feel shame for their opinion. When you go down that route, I find that the truth is often distorted. Um, as someone, again, as one who wants the statue off of public property, I can accept two truths. When Columbus sailed, you know, when he sailed to the Caribbean, that changed the world forever. In a ways, you know, that nothing since is comparable to. I'm also able to accept the truth that he did commit atrocities. These are both documented, you know, both, I, I would say both of these are facts. Um, that can be, you know. Um, I don't want to preach to anyone tonight. I would strongly encourage everyone to do their own research to verify some things said here tonight. I would just like to emphasize, no one wants, I don't think anyone wants to erase history. Um, statues are not history from my point of view. Um, I think that they are able to, they, they have the potential to teach us about history, but they are not history in and of themselves. They are symbols that represent ideas of a specific community at a particular point in time. So I don't think there's anything wrong with at this point in time. I don't think it's disrespectful. I think it's just a generational change. I would love to see reasonable compromise. You know, I, I think about this, the statue could very well, I, you know, if it ends up in, if it were hypothetically up in front of the sons of Italy or the Knights of Columbus, I mean, those are places where the statue would probably be seen more. You know, and I feel like it would be better celebrated in the way it was intended if it was at one of those locations. Um, and, uh, I don't think there's any ill intent. And, uh, to, to finish up, I just want to say that, you know, if, if the statue is not removed from public property, you know, I might be wrong about this, but I have a feeling that this issue is not going to go away. The sentiment, the position to the statue was there before it went up. It was there as it was being erected and I'd be wrong, but I strongly believe that it's going to continue if you don't, if you don't think about it now. Um, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Richard Cooper, thank you so much. Uh, up next is Mike Ricchio.
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, Mike.
Send a letter in. I'll just read it quick.
Don't, don't forget to state your name and address, Mike.
Ricchio, one twenty-four Andrew.
Hey Mike, I'm sorry.
Okay. The, the events of the I vengeful. Are we blog? Are we sparking conversations? No, we are simply driving deeper country. Does removing the statues of Christopher Columbus change the way Southern Italian community feels about him? No, it doesn't. It just creates more hatred. This controversial figure means different things to different people, as do most leaders since the beginning of time. Every person, every person has strengths and weaknesses, good points and bad to their law. Do
Hey Mike, I'm sorry. Sounds like you're.
On a man.
And can we help him, Paul?
Hi Mike. It's Mike. It sounds like you're in a bad wifi or cell service. Apologies. We heard something about.
He disconnected. He disconnected.
Madam Chair, would you like to wait ten seconds or go to the next person and then have, uh?
I think, I think we missed most of his statement. So let him call back and we'll put him in it when we can. Thank you. Let's go on.
Dude. Are you muted?
Sorry, I'm muted. Sorry folks. Samantha Nebiolo, are you with us now?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Samantha Nebiolo. I live on seventeen Church Street in Plansville. Um, I've lived in Suddington for about fifteen years now. Um, I, um, wanted to talk a little bit about my opposition to having the Christopher Columbus statue on public property as I did three years ago when this was first brought up. Contrary to popular belief, contrary to what other people have been seeing on it was contested, um, petitions were signed back then. I sent a letter then. I signed the petition then. I signed the petition this time around. I sent a letter this time around. I'm not going to regale you with facts on Christopher Columbus because there's plenty of educators and historians in towns that have already done so. At this point, everyone in the town council and anyone that has been listening to this conversation knows all the points and historical facts as to why this is a controversial statue. Um, and at this point, it's really willful ignorance, um, to even say that you, that you don't know and that you, this statue morality thing. Um, he, he was never here. Um, and his atrocities really are really are to be remembered. Instead of going into his atrocities, I'm going to give you a small peek into my own family history as a Suddington resident. And guess what? An Italian American. It is true. I am just as black as I am Italian and I will not separate my black side from my Italian side. What I can do is I can trace my Italian heritage and my husband's Italian heritage back to the early thirteenth century. Um, and for my mother, we've narrowed it down to, uh, three or four different Italian provinces. And for the family that I married into, the Nebiolos, which, um, you know, there is an esteemed deacon Jean, rest in peace, my husband's grandfather, um, he served on the board here, um, and I loved him very much. For that family that I married into, we know exactly where the family line comes from in Piedmont, where the little acid that grows on the foggy hillsides. Nebiolo means little fog. When it comes to my black heritage, it gets a little murky. I have one story from trying to learn this lineage that came from a discussion with my dad about the native reeducation camps where indigenous people were trained on how to assimilate and turn their back on their savage ways. I guess this would be to Dylan's point where Tainos are only known for weaving cotton and eating babies. Not sure about that one. Anyway, he said to me, I'm pretty sure my mom was adopted out of one of those schools because I think my mom was an Indian too. I corrected him to say indigenous. He blinked at me and then we agreed on saying native for the rest of the conversation. His grandfather was born a slave who may or may not have had a child with a Native American woman. Part of the black experience in this country and what you guys will know on the town council is not knowing where your heritage actually derives from. I'm not willing to send our DNA out into the world, which I'm not willing to do. But that's not, that's not really the issue. I feel connected to the pain that indigenous people have suffered through the indignity of having a celebration of this person murdered their ancestor, especially in light of not knowing who my own ancestors actually are. It's really as simple as this. When I hear the discourse around erasing history, I laugh at the horrible, horrible irony of this. Here we are, Italian Americans. We can have this deep and rich and full knowledge of our own age and we choose this near mythical man, a story that highlights a magical, like of the magic of discovery. And it races the rest of it. It erases brown faces like me, decrying that I'm not a true Italian. And it's happened here in town. Statues are a symbol. And while some Italians in this town regard Christopher Columbus as a symbol for the spirit of discovery, I think that the statue in a public space is really a symbol of how unwelcoming this community can really be to people that are brown, just like me. It's really allowed for some ugly discourse and terrible interactions um, and intolerance towards one another. And it reminds me that some in our town, to some in our town, the cultist gives some ominous warning that oppression is being taken away from them. It's a symbol of knowing seven centuries of history about your family. The motto that famously stakes claim to a city of progress, yet we can't prog, our ma, our town motto famously stakes claims to being a city of progress, yet we cannot make progress beyond this point. Italian pride and history does not need to come at the expense of others when we have so much knowledge and context available to us. And if I have the time, I would like to share something that, um, my, one of my good friends who is a civil rights lawyer had to say about, about history. This debate is truly showing that we need to look at how history is being taught. I do not wish for one set of myths to be traded for another. History is not mythology or religion. We need to take a look at the record objectively. We need, we have the ability to do this. People across the spectrum seem to be offended by that objective reality. It's what makes them want to cling to this particular absurd historical figure. The point of history is to study it like science and to see how we all got from point A to point B. The moment you start inserting political ideologies and valuing certain cultures over others is where we go from history to myth-making imprinted into our minds, set in stone by statue. Every culture has things to be proud of and things to be ashamed of. And all of it, warts and all, is really the only way to understand our past. We do not need a statue to commen, commemorate what we are unwilling to look at actively. And that's all I have to say.
Samantha, thank you for, uh, the time and, uh, coming out and speaking. Okay, uh, I understand Mike Ricchio is back on the line. Mike, did you want to try again? Hopefully you got a better signal this time.
I do. Thanks. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, I'll just start real quick, um, from the beginning. The events of the last several months hyped by a vengeful media machine have done nothing for any cause that is being pitched. All it has done is pitted one group of Americans against another. Are we accomplishing anything? Are we changing the dialogue? Are we sparking good conversations? No, we are simply driving deeper and deeper hatred into our communities. Does removing the statue of Christopher Columbus change the way Suddington Italian community feels about him and his accomplishments? No, it doesn't. It just creates more hatred. The con, this controversial figure means different things to different people, as do most leaders since the beginning of time. Every person, and I mean every person, has strengths and weaknesses, good points and bad points in their lives. And what we've heard tonight are quotes and actual scholars from both sides of this issue who have two completely conflicting stories about one man that lived over, over five hundred years ago. Do we sit here five hundred years in the future and pass judgment on a man, a civilization we couldn't even comprehend? The day, the age of discovery was brutal without question. And it isn't an age that any of us could even remotely understand. People were barbaric and society was barbaric as people set off to conquer the world in new lands. Is it something that we would do today? Hmm, I really wonder. But in a more civilized way, would we be But in a more civilized way, would we be doing it? Remotely. Who are we to judge? Will Americans in five hundred years move to erase all the leaders of our time because they defended capitalism or tried to eradicate communism? Time will tell. What should we do instead? Our council, which already has two educators on it, should seek to educate our children and the public about both sides of every historic figure. Show the good with the bad, just as there, there is in ourselves. Tell the entire story of Christopher Columbus so that we can learn from the mistakes that he made and recognize the accomplishments, some of which brought us to this new world in which we now can call home. Education is the key to improvement in this world and in our lives. Our educators need to be able to tell the whole story, and so do we. As a recip- as recipients of the Unico Gold Medal and members of the Unico Club, I know that Chairwoman Trino and Councilman Pomer, I understand what Italian heritage is all about. They both knew both sides of the story when the statue was erected, but they also gave it their blessing. Why? Because they both know that building a strong community means supporting the makeup of the community. Let's use this statue to begin year-long celebrations of all of our heritage in Southington and recognize the heroes that are meaningful to each of us. Those from different ethnic backgrounds, different skin colors, different races and backgrounds. Let's make Southington the world leader in acceptance and diversification. Let's start the conversation again and stop the hate. Thank you for.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for coming out and speaking. Okay, uh, up next is Melissa.
Hi there, um, Melissa Paulgren, thirty-one Birch Crest.
Hi, Melissa.
Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely. Sound good.
Terrific. Um, thank you guys for opening this up to the town, and I can appreciate both sides of this. Um, you may remember I spoke at the last meeting in support of the statue, which I still am. I cited a paragraph written by, written in NPR by Lakshmi Gandhi that I truly felt encompassed how the Italian community feels. And I think Mike pretty much summed that up. Um, you know, that, that paragraph and what he said go hand in hand. Tonight, I would like to take this to where we are today, some four, four weeks later from that first meeting. I'm sure most of you are aware that there's an activist out there named Sean King. He's a man who openly calls for certain extreme measures to be taken in the honor of the BLM movement. While Mr. King has amassed a following as the voice of BLM, which now today includes removing Christ, we cannot let the words of the BLM co-founder Patrice Cullors fall on deaf ears. She was quoted as saying, "We are trained Marxists. We are super versed on sort of ideological theories." That's a direct quote from her. In twenty fifteen, she called for a disruption of the Western prescribed nuclear family structure, the same year that these civic organizations took the petition to the town council to begin their plight for the placing of the statue. She made that the official platform of her movement. Ms. Cullors made the statement two years prior to our monument being erected, and we still moved forward with it. A monument that was unanimously passed by some who are still sitting on our town council today. So are we as supporters to assume that some have had a moment since then, perhaps? I, I, I don't know what honestly has changed, and that's the part I personally get stuck on. However, it brings up an entirely new conversation in my head, as we know that Ms. Cullors' words are directly linked to modern Marxism. If any council member supports taking down the statue, the words of Ms. Cullors directly link you to supporting that theory. And I say that, and that's a pretty bold statement, but I truly believe it because this did not become an issue until George Floyd became an issue. Christopher Columbus has only been there for not even three years. And yes, he was met with a silent protest at the time and petitions, and, and I respect everyone's opinion on this. However, it was still erected. So the ideology, ideology of Marxism or its support has no place in our town, period. And that's where we're at with this. I'm looking at this a little deeper and a little further into the future. The word's been thrown around lately. She just made the statement in June, but what remains is a sad reality that most people who are fighting this cause of the statues, abolishing the police, and now, from what I understand, Christ, honestly have no idea what they're actually supporting. I don't know what they're supporting. It's simply become the new cool thing to do, and it just isn't. It's caused hatred in this town. It's caused division in this town. I've been personally attacked. I've seen others personally attacked. It just needs to end. I, I don't know how it ends. I support keeping him as is. He hasn't been there very long. Um, but I'm going to end this by saying that after I spoke on this at the last meeting, I was overwhelmed with messages from people in town, both via messenger, in the mail, thanking me for acknowledging that the Italians felt discriminated against and that Columbus was really looked at as their, their go-to guy. There were also some that were highly questioning the positions that some of our counselors have, since there are some same counselors currently who now voted, who voted it in then and now want it taken down. This just makes no sense. It's an ugly topic. Nobody's going to disagree about that. But supporting this monument, you all need to realize you're not, it doesn't make you a racist. It doesn't make you close-minded. It doesn't make you anything other than a strong Southington, standing up against this modern Marxism movement that brought us to where we are today. And I truly feel that that's the first step to defunding the police, smashing in the church murals. I mean, everything that's, you know, coming out daily in the news. I watched the chief of police in New Haven today speak, and I really could have cried. It was horrifying. They're struggling there with crime. They're struggling there with so much. They are an example of where we don't want to be. Don't let us go down that road. Make a decision. Make it stand and put this, please put this to rest. I am in support of keeping him there. I don't feel he's harming anyone. I am an Italian. I was taught and raised that he was my pathway to Southington. And thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, Melissa, for coming out and speaking. Uh, Jolene Misselli. Did I say your last name right, Jolene?
You did. Thank you.
Or is yours?
Thank you. Uh, I'm Jolene Misselli from Hilltop Drive here in Southington, born and raised. Um, I am against the statue at the municipal center, and turns out I'm not a Marxist. I know, maybe that's surprising to some people. Um, I just don't understand how discussion about a topic like this can turn into anybody who disputes the statue is about hatred, or anybody who disputes the statue is a Marxist. We're trying to have educated decisions about history, some of which, you know, guess what? Sometimes we have gaps in. I graduated from the Southington High School school system. For the most part, I was taught Columbus was a hero. I was taught that, um, he discovered America and he, um, is responsible for the wonderful contributions we have today. It was through a teacher in Southington High School and some other teachers in college that had really got to experience more of the history. And I'm certainly not going to go over more of the history. Everybody is really driven that point home. But as an Italian, I definitely say, I, I think we can have better representation. Um, I, I think there's so many wonderful Italians that helped this community grow, like Christina had brought up. I feel like when we look at Columbus's strengths and weaknesses, sure, we'll give courage. You know, it's a courageous thing to do, to go out and do an uncharted thing to your knowledge. However, I, I can't undermine the cutting off of hands and the raping and selling nine and ten-year-olds into slavery. Is there good and bad with public figures? Sure. But I, I think a lot of our public figures aren't going to be looked back at and said, any of us currently would have raped and murdered a lot of people. And remember, please, in Columbus's time, in his own time, he was stripped of his titles because of the atrocity. So that is something I think should be considered when people say, oh, it was a different time. He was stripped of his titles. Um, uh, you know, I really hope that we can all just challenge our ideas, uh, challenge what we've learned, uh, challenge the gaps in our education. To me, seeing this statue really just exemplifies a gap in a lot of our knowledge. Um, I know that it's very personal. It's very personal to some people, and I would love to honor other Italian citizens like myself, but I'd like to do it right. I would like to make sure that they have a respectful figure to represent them. Um, and they shouldn't be judged for wanting to have the discussion, to talk about the real history. Um, to just ignore it as Marxism or erasing history is in itself ignoring history. Let's tell the whole story. Let's work together. Let's find a better representation for our people and for all of the people of Southington. It's not just Italians. All right. Peace out, guys.
Thank you, Jolene. Appreciate that. Okay. Anna Terrell, Terrell?
It's Terrell. That's fine.
Hi, Terrell. Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
You're up.
Okay, so, uh, Anna Terrell from fifty Cambridge Drive, Southington, Connecticut, zero six four eight nine. So I wrote something, but honestly, like, many people have already said what I was going to say, so I'll keep it short. Um, so I wrote the petition for the removal, and I just want to clear up that for when I do send my petition, I will be going through all the signatures and making sure I only include people from Southington. It's going to take a while because there are so many signatures. Um, so that's that. So just want to say that Italian-Americans have faced a lot of violent oppression in the past. So it doesn't make sense to me that they celebrate a man who was himself an oppressor. I've said this before, Columbus was a cruel man who committed countless crimes against the indigenous peoples. He enslaved the native peoples of the West Indies. He was a brutal person. The statue does not preserve history, but rather it erases and ignores the history. It ignores the pain inflicted on the native populations and commemorates a violent and brutal man. Perhaps our standards and morals have changed in the last five hundred years, but the people who were murdered and raped did not need to look at the calendar to know that what was done to them was wrong. So I'll just end on saying to the Italian-Americans and everybody in Southington, we have so many people to be proud of, but Christopher Columbus is not one of them. We can lift up people in the community without putting others down. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for having.
Okay, Anna, thank you so much for coming out. Appreciate it. Up next is, uh, Zabigniew Prusak. Did I get the last name right? Zabigniew.
Yes, I'm here.
Ah, there you go.
All right, well, uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Just please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Zabigniew Prusak, uh, seventy-nine Hitching Post in Southington. Um, I am Southington resident, resident for over fifteen years now. Um, I'm not of Italian descent. So I don't really have that type of estate in the game here. But I can tell you that, uh, it's only revered in America. Not in Spain and much even less in Italy. There are very few monuments of Columbus in Italy, a few more in Spain and obviously in America. So, um, I really applaud what, uh, some of the residents told us here, told us the history, how come Columbus became such a, um, a figure for American Italians or Italian-Americans. Um, and I'm not here to defend Columbus as a man, nor to condemn him as a man, because there are arguments both ways. Certain things that I have heard here that Columbus was, um, stripped of his titles and riches because of the, of atrocities he, uh, he has committed. It's not quite true historically. He had many, you know, business rivals politically. That's how it played out, actually. He was not paid for, um, what he was supposed to be paid for, his values. That, that's a lot of reporting is very offensive. I'm not here to defend him, but I have a question that I would like everyone to ponder. What are we trying to accomplish? Are we trying to rewrite the history? Are we trying to correct the written history? And to cite Henry Ford, he had very short saying about it. History is bunk. History is written by the winners. So another question I have, where are we moving with it? Because, uh, what I see here is we're moving exactly on the path, ideological path that led to French Revolution seventeen eighty-nine. Was repeated nineteen seventeen, Soviet Revolution in Russia. Then nineteen thirty-five, purges in Soviet Union. Then nineteen sixties and seventies, Cultural Revolution in China. Then seventies, Khmer Rouge in Cambodia. And we can find a few more that are, you know, less relevant in history. The interesting thing to me is that, um, if anyone has been to France, and if you, if you go, just pay attention to what their national symbols look like. French do not remove statues of their kings, symbols of their past. They don't revere them, but they don't remove them. They learn based on that and they educate their youth why absolute monarchy is no good or what it led to. They educate them about liberty, equality, paternity. Okay, the three most sacred words in, in France. So another question I have for everyone to ponder. Yeah, we, we, we removed the statue of, of Columbus. Okay, so what's next? I suggest that we start by anything pilgrim-related. That seems to be very logical to me. And then, maybe then, we can follow the lead of, uh, of what's going on in Sweden, and we can say that, uh, you know, I'm walking on public property and I see a religious symbol on that cross or that church or something like that. That, that offends me. I don't like that. Will they get there? So, uh, what I would say is try these, let's try these carefully, because as one speaker said, that there is actually more hate that is being sown in this society, and I, I think I, I very much agree with this. I don't see learning from history. I don't see teaching our children to understand the history, to analyze it and understand it. So we can forge better history, because if we don't understand the history, how, how can we understand the present and how can we build the better? So, um, that would be about it, what I would like to say, and I thank you again for the opportunity to allow to speak.
Okay. Zabigniew, thank you so much for coming out. Uh, up next is Stephanie Mitchell. After Stephanie, Nicholas Tedesco. Do we still have Stephanie with us? I'm not sure. Steph- Stephanie might be on the phones. I do not see Stephanie on the computer. It looks like her family member Peyton Mitchu- Mitchell might have, uh, put in for her. Unfortunately, I don't know which phone number. There's sixty call-in, sixty call-in, uh, folks. So I can't find, uh, Stephanie until we get to the phone portion. So I'm going to suggest that we go to the next person, Nicholas Tedesco. We're going to open up Nicholas. I'm sorry, before you start, uh, all the call-in numbers, just so, so everybody knows, uh, Peyton, they all say call-in user one through seventy, so, uh, we're just going to have to wait until the phone lines are open. So Nicholas Tedesco, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chupinski, and, uh, hello to all town councilors and other residents of Southington. My name is Nicholas Tedesco. I leave, live at six fifty Mulberry Street in Plansville, Connecticut. Um, I would like to say that my family has a rich Italian heritage. My grandfather Salvatore, uh, emigrated via Ellis Island, um, in the early eighteen nineties, and, um, we've lived in Southington a really, really long time. Um, actually, many of you may know, or currently be living in a house that either him or my grandfather built. Um, and I want to say that the Christopher Columbus statue outside the municipal center doesn't in no way represent the way that I think of my Italian heritage. It's something to it, it's a, it's an honest disgrace. Um, I, I would much rather commemorate my great-grandfathers, my grandfather's service in World War Two, the houses they built, um, or many of the other Italian-American or people of any descent. Or many of the other Italian-American or people of any descent that have lived in town and made this town a better place to live in. I don't think a rapist, a murderer, and a slave trader in any way deserves to be commemorated in any way. I do not want to have to explain to young people that, hey, if you rape, enslave, and murder enough people, you will someday get a statue in your honor. That's an unacceptable thing. It's it's just abhorrent that we even have to be here this evening telling people that this has no place in this town and has no place in history. I'm fine. Send it to the Knights of Columbus, which, by the way, my grandfather was a member of. You know, if you want to display that on private land, by all means, but it has no place, absolutely no place in a public venue. And I concede my time to the, to the rest of the room. I just would like to highlight my heritage and involvement in this town and yeah.
Awesome. Thanks, Nicholas, for coming out.
Of course. Anytime. I'm staying in, but I'm here.
Right. Uh, we're going to put Stephanie Mitchell back on. Stephanie, the floor is yours. Uh, Stephanie, you might be on mute. I think you said you were using Peyton Mitchell's account. You know what? Apologies, but Peyton Mitchell did not log in in a way that allows for audio. So unfortunately, you guys might need to log out and log back in because the audio is not started on Peyton's account. So why don't we let you guys try to figure that out and we will go to we will go to the next one. Let's see. Okay, we're down to about the last half dozen or so, I think. We spoke to Nicholas. Tyler, is it Lemoine?
Yes.
Hi, Tyler. Name and address.
Thanks. So I'm Tyler Lemoine, lived at 134 Beechwood Drive, Southington, Connecticut. So I just want to start off by saying, as an Italian-American, I can understand where people's emotions, frustrations come from. This is a symbol that you were taught as Washington Irving had once told a fictional myth and character that is Columbus. I can understand needing to collect your ideology to a symbol and live through it because you were constantly persecuted. But that's not the case here. Democracy is a function of progress. If we do not allow democracy to change with the people and their morals, and we do not allow it to continue towards progress.
Can you just text him and tell him that I'm?
Nope.
I don't hear anything now.
Stephanie, do you want to mute? Sorry, or I can give you, yield your time.
Folks, mute your phones. Paul, you're on mute. I've got Stephanie on mute. Go ahead, Tyler. Keep going.
Thank you. If we do not allow democracy to function towards progress, then we do not allow ourselves to change. Statues are not necessary to preserve history. We do not hold statues of King James and King George. And to the constant beratement of Marxism and Communism and the fight against democracy, which is not what this is about. We don't have the Berlin Wall still standing. It's torn down, and yet we know it's history. Italian-Americans, as I've said in the beginning, have wanted to cling to a symbol to feel integrated, to feel included, to feel a part of the American dream. But we cannot, as Italian-Americans, keep living in this lie. This man was racist. This man was genocidal. This man was homicidal. And this man's mission, regardless of how historians want to look for it, was to conquer. The Americas and the Taiwanese people were not discovered. They were attempted to be erased. And for us to claim that statues being removed is erasure. But what was done by Columbus was not erasure. Then I don't know what we're talking about. Remove the statue. Get ourselves over it and move on to something better. I yield my time.
Okay, Tyler, thank you so much for coming out. Stephanie, are you able to unmute now?
Thank you. I'm so sorry for my technical difficulties. Thank you, Paul. Yes, Stephanie Mitchell, Phil Mitchell, Peyton Mitchell, and Olivia Mitchell, 177 Miller Farm Road in Plansville. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. We are writing to voice our disapproval of the Christopher Columbus statue and our strong desires for its removal from the municipal building grounds. As residents of Southington, we are outraged that in the 21st century, this city of progress and the majority of its elected officials and members of the town council are so abhorrently on the wrong side of history, focusing on the past instead of understanding the present and setting goals for the future of our community. We need to decipher what is fact and what is fiction and understand that some ideas can be based on previous biases, untrue or ignored completely. As a community, we need to be on the right and true side of history. As we understand, the elected officials of this town chose to erect a statue to memorialize an evil man whose facts and history have proven. Columbus did not discover or settle America. He and his men pillaged villages. They raped and murdered men, women, and children, and nearly exterminated a group of indigenous people. Is this how we want to show how Southington is a city of progress? Why Christopher Columbus? I, Stephanie, am a proud first-generation Italian-American. I'm not interested in honoring someone like Columbus. It is the same reason why there were not any statues erected to commemorate the efforts of Adolf Hitler or Benito Mussolini during World War II. Tearing down or replacing the statue will not erase history. Christopher Columbus's egregious acts are still found in primary and secondary source documents across the internet and publications to this day. We understand that Southington has a very vibrant and thriving Italian history and heritage, and this is wonderful. It is therefore our duty as Italian-Americans to recognize and commemorate those Italians who have made long-lasting and valuable contributions to our society as a whole. My mother and my late father, who both immigrated from Italy, from Arzo, in fact, as teenagers, as well as many of our town's forefathers, would definitely agree, knowing now what we know about the atrocities that Columbus committed. There have been many honorable and famous Italians who have made important contributions to mankind, most notably in the fields of science, mathematics, philosophy, engineering, economics, international politics, visual arts, and music. Some include Da Vinci, Michelangelo, Alighieri, Montalcini, Galilei, Machiavelli, Montessori, Enrico Fermi, Guglielmo Marconi, and Catherine Siena, et cetera. These Italians have truly made a difference in the world we live in today. Additionally, as even more incredulous and ludicrous is that the elected officials in the majority seemingly use politics and backdoor deals to inconspicuously push through the project to wreck the statue, which was privately funded without allowing for the citizens that they represent to voice their true opinions. This is a violation of the trust that we as citizens should have in our elected officials and the transparency, the bidirectional communication, and the community engagement that is needed if you're representing us. What we find absolutely disingenuous is not only was there not a public hearing on the construction and placement of the statue, but it was listed as an agenda item in the town attorney's report, just like Columbus statue. This statue was erected with funds from private donors and in no way should be placed on public property in front of a municipal building, which houses the Southington Board of Ed. Southington should follow other cities and towns in Connecticut and across the country and get back to the right side of history. Ideally, the Christopher Columbus statue should be permanently removed. The town of Southington, embodied in our elected officials, should do the right thing this time around and amend their tragic mistake and mend their relationship with the entire community that they represent. If the town chooses not to hear the many voices in opposition and permanently remove the statue, then it should consider relocating the statue to private property of the individuals and organizations who funded the project. Thank you for the opportunity to voice our disapproval and our very strong desires for its removal. And I just wanted to end on a note, if I may. Well, I want to leave you a quote by Margaret Chase Smith. Many of you will know who she is, a member of the Republican Party, who was the first woman to serve the State of Maine in both Houses of Congress, spanning from 1940 to 1973. She is noted for her 1950 speech, Declaration of Conscience. She said, quote, "The right way is not always the popular way, popular and easy way. Standing for right when it is unpopular is a true test of moral character," the quote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate that. Okay, Peggy Cameron, you're up next. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely. Hi, Peggy.
Um, I've been, my name is Peggy Cameron. I live on Pleasant Street in Southington. I've been a resident here for 46 years. And of course, I go way back. I'm almost 82 years old. And for us, you know, Christopher Columbus was hero. And it's surprising to me that in all these 82 years, almost, that I've been around, that I've never heard all the things that are being said about him prior to what's going on today. So I have two questions that I want to ask. The first one is, why did we put Christopher Columbus statues up all around the country in the first place? There must have been a lot of people that wanted to recognize him or honor his name or appreciate him for some reason. Because it's not just a statue in Southington. There's statues all over our country that have been put up. And why do we put them up in the first place? Oh, but now there are people who want to take them down, but, you know, they have to remember why we put them up in the first place. And the second question is, how many requests to have his statue taken down have there been before George Floyd died? In Southington, we had some because I guess there was some question about it back when it was decided to put a statue up in town here. But across the country, where was all the requests and all the arguments that we should put, take his statues down before George Floyd died? So my thoughts are that it's just a result of his death. And that if this, if he hadn't died, we'd still be going along as life is. So I definitely hope we don't take his statue down because, to me, it's sad to see something that is part of my era of growing up that we celebrated. And I know that our country celebrated. We even have Columbus Day and we have statues all over and everything. So for me, it's sad to see something that was part of my era of growing up. Being want, want, people want to destroy it. So I definitely am opposed to taking down his statue. I know everybody has their opinions, and I'm very glad that I've had an opportunity to state mine. So thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thanks for coming out tonight, Peggy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so up next is Lauren Johns.
Hi.
We can.
Okay. Yep, Lauren Johns, Pondview Drive in Southington. I wanted to address that, something that Peggy just said, you know, in her era, she said that this didn't happen until George Floyd was killed. And in my era, if it wasn't George Floyd, it'd be somebody else. So it just happened to be George Floyd's name. So I did want to direct that, and it is because Black Lives Do Matter. When Melissa spoke about BLM earlier, it's Black Lives Matter. I am a Black indigenous person of color, and I was just going to simply read my remarks. But this isn't about erasing history. This, this isn't about taking down a statue. A statue is not going to solve the problem of police brutality or racism. In my era, when I grew up, because I went to Southington High School and I graduated, my classmates thought it was okay to hang to Bucky Jones from a tree. I had to live with that. So to see a statue where somebody did things like that to my ancestors, where I have to walk by, where I did run for the Board of Education this year, to have to walk by that with my daughter and have to explain it is unconscious. It's just unconscionable. The whole point of mistakes are that we learn from them. Like I said before, I was born and raised in this town. However, there are many great Italians that I would rather see a statue resurrected of. I know that if it cannot be destroyed, that it should at least be put on private property because I, once again, as a Black person, should not have to walk around because it does not represent me, where I'm from and where my ancestors are from. The people should have a say. We're at an inflection point. Across this country, all sorts of monuments are being taken down. Yes, right now the hotspot is Columbus because it is such a true injustice that it was erected. I'm even more embarrassed as a person of color in this town to admit that this statue was put up within the last five years. We should do better. We know better. Once again, if you want to put it up in front of the Knights of Columbus, that's fine. It's private money. Put it on a private location. Don't make the rest of us have to relive something that you do not understand and will not understand, the pain that it has inflicted on some of our generations. So respectfully, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you for letting me be heard.
Thanks, Lauren, for coming out. Appreciate that. Okay, up next is Steve Misucci. After Steve, after Steve, we have a reveal.
Hey there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, hi, Steve.
Hi there, Steve Misucci, Royal Oak Drive in Southington. I appreciate the input of all the callers tonight, and I've enjoyed hearing the views and perspectives that they've brought to the table. I feel we all grow as individuals when we listen and consider the views of others. I would argue, however, that coming together to discuss history and learn from it and continue to advance as individuals and as a society is far from the intent of those who are fueling the current cancel culture and its memory hole. Quite the opposite. Their intent is rewriting our history, the history of our country and tearing down and the destruction of the greatest nation ever to exist on the planet and ripping apart our freedoms that we as citizens cherish and that many have given their lives to protect. Sure, they're using the removal and destruction of statues and monuments today to push their narrative, but tomorrow they'll move on to the elimination of other parts of our history that they deem unnecessary or counter to their goals. As was mentioned earlier, we could spend countless hours debating the merits of having a statue of Christopher Columbus on town property or naming a school after John F. Kennedy or naming a town hall after John White Cell or a street after Ralph Ricchio. But in the end, simply removing a statue or changing the name on a building does little, if anything, to change the values and mores of a citizen. What we're usually left with is a broader and deeper divisiveness than when we started. And in the end, that is the goal of those who drive these movements. And we as Americans, and we are all Americans, I'm Italian by descent, but I'm an American first, last, and always. As Americans, we must recognize this and denounce it. And united as one, we must stand up and say, not now, not ever. I would also suggest that simply moving the statue from the town offices and relocating it to a prominent location on Center Street, on the front steps of the Sons of Italy, would do little, if anything at all, to satisfy the zeal for those who are trying to destroy our history. And thus, lastly, as a taxpayer, we must demand that if the monument is moved to another location, it must be given the same protection from vandals and those who would attempt to destroy it and tear it down as we would expect would be given to each of our own private property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Up next is Horatio Donato.
Horatio, thank you, Paul. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Horatio Donato, 197 Carter Lane, where I've been living since 1988. And I've been in Southington since the mid-'70s, right off the boat from Italy. I retired professor from CCSU where I taught for 21 years. I just retired from public schools after 35 years. I just retired from public schools after thirty-five years as a Spanish teacher. I just want to put in my two signs. I did not prepare a lecture, but hopefully have enough time. It's kind of short. Number one, is Columbus the beginning of an oppression? Most likely is. Should the statue be removed if it's, if it is an insult to cultures? Yes, but let it be removed upon educated and historical facts, not ignorance. Now, what were Columbus's objectives coming on this side of the world? He tried to prove that the world was round, and he tried to get a shorter route to India where the economy was at the time with tea and silk and all of that, instead of going through the outer, around Africa and the ocean and the Indian Ocean. Okay, Columbus did four trips. He never knew that he landed on another hemisphere, and he called the West Indies because he thought it wasn't the West East. He miscalculated the circumference of the Earth to be a lot smaller than where it actually is. And then, of course, as you know, the winds go from west to east, and flying to Europe, it takes a lot shorter than coming back. And Columbus was going zigzag, so he really navigated way more miles than he did and he thought it was actually on the west side of India. Now, what were Columbus's objectives? I said to prove that the world was round and to find a shore route to India. Was Columbus, were Columbus's objectives to, number one, enslave people? No. Was it to spread diseases? Of course not. Columbus landed in the Caribbean, and his first voyage, we don't really know where he landed, but one thing's for sure, he landed in the Caribbean, Cuba, somewhere around there, a land inhabited by the Taínos, that were a very strong culture, just as big as, powerful as the Aztecs, the Mayas, the Incas, that lived here. Borincen, what is now the island of Puerto Rico, was inhabited by the Poriquas, that were part of the Taínos. Taínos were cannibals. And he found himself in these lands, not knowing where he was. What he endured was a voyage that I don't know anybody that would have the courage that Columbus took upon. He was a man that had simply no idea what he was getting himself into. What happened afterwards is a different story. Now, when it comes to the Italian part of Suddington, does Italy need Columbus to represent Italian culture? No. As I believe Michel said, you know, Italy's got Caesar, Dante, Aristo, Machiavelli, Michelangelo, Da Vinci, Jotun, I could run and answer, Lini. Italy does not need Columbus to represent their culture. Italy has given the world seventy percent of their cultural patrimony. Most of it recognized by UNESCO. Has nothing to do with Columbus. Columbus could have been Russian, Polish, you name it. It does not matter. What I, and in fact, his diaries, a lot of people are based their historical knowledge, I don't know on what, but as far as I know, Columbus's diaries, number one, are considered the very, very first piece of American literature written on this side of the world. They're written in Spanish. If somebody really, really read Columbus's diaries, hopefully they know Spanish. They're in Rockabye in the Netherlands. There's a museum in the Netherlands. I never had the opportunity to read them, but I would love to read them. But what I celebrate about Columbus is not the Italian heritage. And I am so, and by the way, during Columbus's time in the fifteenth century, Italy did not exist as a country. Columbus was from Geneva, the one that Trump, this book, the one that gave the Levi's, the jeans, and, and they became a nation in eighteen sixty-one. As a nation, Italy is actually a lot younger than the United States, but Italy has given, or the rich, the area of Italy, the Romans, has given us the, our constitution, our democracy, okay? The time of Columbus, the reason we want to stay in is because nobody wants to support. The Medici in Florence will not support him. The Milan will not support, all the city-states will not support him. He did not exist as a country at the time. Okay, but what do I celebrate from Columbus?
Erasio, maybe wrap up in the next ten seconds because we'll wrap up.
What do I celebrate about Columbus is giving Jimmy Andrews the guitar, is giving the Native Americans the horses that disappeared in the seven world ten thousand years ago. Okay, what is Switzerland without the acid chocolate? What is Italy without tomatoes? Can you imagine the Italian cuisine without tomato sauce? If Columbus did not done this, somebody else would have done it. I don't know how Columbus enslaved and tortured and did everything that people are saying, but I have yet to document. So thank you for your time, and I really appreciate it. I've been enjoying hearing everybody and listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Erasio. Appreciate it. Up next, Tony Morrison.
Yeah, thanks, Paul, and thanks to Town Council for letting me speak. My name is Tony Morrison. I live at forty-nine Blotcher Farm Place. And thanks to everyone else on the, the hearing tonight. It was interesting to hear both sets of views. And to me, it's, I heard, you know, on one hand, Columbus is this heroic figure, just a heroic figure, which apparently a lot of you guys in Suddington were taught at school. On the other hand, that he was a genocidal homicidal maniac. Neither of those are true in the sense of historical. Columbus was a man like, like all of us, and he was imperfect. And he did things that today we would consider outside, outside the norm. But he wasn't this massive villain that people have said. And I'll just give you a few examples. Cutting off hands, mutilating natives, he never did that. There's nothing, no primary sources that say that. The Spaniards did afterwards, after he was dead, but he never did it, raping women. The only documentation we have of that is him condemning the practice. And it's not only that, that people at the time mentioned, the Spaniards complained bitterly when he was gone in those islands, that he insisted on having vows of poverty and chastity. He was genocidal. No, he wasn't. The, we know now that the native, natives in the Americas were decimated, not by warfare, but by disease, wiped, essentially wiped out, particularly smallpox. He was a racist. Well, maybe he was. Most people were at that time. You know, it doesn't matter who you were. But it's important to note that he disciplined both Spaniards and natives in his governorship in exactly the same way. In fact, his last act as a governor was to hang two Spaniards. So, but when you say, when you pose two equally opposing views that are very, very different, neither are true. What's true is something in the middle. And I think that's what people have to get to when they see if someone is worthy of a statue or not. What he did do was, number one, he discovered a brand new landmass, which was called America at the time, as on the Columbus statue. It's now obviously split into North America and South America. But he, he discovered that in the sense that other people had been here before. The Polynesians apparently made it to South America. The Vikings made it to North America. But he was the one that opened up the fact, for the first time ever in the history of the world, every single landmass on, on the world was connected with each other. And that's where the, someone mentioned before, the Columbian exchange comes in. You know, that's the first time ever that happened. And secondly, out of that, it's such a, an epoch-making event that we split history in the last thousand years. We, in, in, in the Americas, in the lands where we live, we split it into two eras, pre-Columbian and post-Columbian. Now, it's not many people in history that have eras and epochs named after them. And one of them is Columbus. So that's why I think he, his statue is worthy of being pretty much in any American town or city. Because after Columbus, obviously, there came twenty or thirty countries in this landmass, one of which was, was ours. And it's difficult to throw away your sort of birthright or your creation myth. It's very difficult to do that. What he did, in the sense of, in his discovery, was, was a pretty heroic act, even though I don't consider him a hero, but it was a heroic act. It was, you know, to sail off for five weeks into the unknown was, is, is pretty amazing. Requires strength, fortitude, bravery, that very few of us have. So for those two things alone, I think he's worthy of, obviously, a statue, and particularly with the American context. Now, a couple of people mentioned that they thought having a statue of anybody on public land opens you up to all kinds of problems, legal problems, et cetera. But we've had a statue in this town, we've had a statue for a hundred years, you know? At the moment, there are two, there are two memorials on town land. One is the Rochambeau Memorial in Marion, and the second is Columbus, okay? If you want to have another statue on town land, I say go for it, okay? Go for it because that is what America is about. It's accretive. It's not destructive. And I think those asking for the removal of the statue should more consider constructive events like.
Tony, your five minutes is up. Do you think you can wrap in maybe ten seconds or so?
Sure. Look at Mount Rushmore. The Sioux, the Coates Sioux wanted a statue of Crazy Horse on Mount Rushmore. They were denied, so they, so they went and built their own. She's standing there, got a sculpture. At the moment, there's one of the biggest statue in the world is being sculpted out of the hills of South Dakota, twenty miles down the road. That's what people do who are creative, okay? They don't tear things down and destroy them. Thanks a lot, Paul.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, up next, here's what we have left for the computer folks who are participating in the public hearing. We have three left. It is Bob Sergeant, Kelly Cameron, and Catherine Tiz. So Bob Sergeant, you are up and the floor is yours. If, if there's anybody else who wants to speak that's on the computer, please go ahead and type it in the chat, otherwise those are the last three that I have so far. Bob, do you have your computer unmuted, or are you still with us? Let me check in Bob Sergeant. I see Bob there. Bob, you look like you're unmuted. Okay, why don't we give Bob a few minutes? We can, we can have him come back. Looks like somebody just came in. Is that you, Bob? Okay, why don't we move on and we'll put Bob at the, we'll put Bob at the end. Kelly Cameron. Do we have Kelly Cameron?
Already spoke.
Okay, I'm sorry, Kelly. Okay, Catherine. And I see Rodney after Catherine, right, Rodney? Okay, Catherine?
Ellie's there. She's just got a. Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, hold on. Who's speaking? I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Kelly Cameron.
Oh, hi, Kelly. Why don't we go ahead? Go ahead. You can go first and then we'll do Catherine.
Thank you. I live at eleven twenty-two Pleasant Street, and I've lived in town since the nineteen seventies. I moved away for ten years and then I came back. But I think that we should keep the statue because it represents the Italians in the town. I'm from an Italian background and I understand the monument. I also think that we should build other monuments for other people groups in town. If Martin Luther King Jr. represents African-Americans, then we should have a monument for them. Since we are going through the Corona, the coronavirus, we should have monuments for doctors and nurses. And next month, I'm a doctoral student with a school out in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm doing it online. I'm doing a dissertation on the Women's Suffrage Movement. Women's Suffrage Movement is the hundredth anniversary of women voting is next month, August twenty twenty. Hundred years ago, women had the right to vote. Since women are here in town, we should have a woman statue. And there are many churches in town that we should have a monument of a pastor, a Sikh, whatever faith. We have many issues of faith here in town. Christopher Columbus was a man of faith. Instead of destroying history, we should not take the statue down, but we should build up history. Removing the statue will not remove history. History is not perfect because people were not perfect, and we can't remove history. Let's send out a survey in town of the ethnographics in the town and build other monuments to other people groups in town. We should not be ignorant of history. We should learn from history, grow from history. Learning from history will keep us from repeating the negative events of the past and help us change for a brighter future. We don't want to rewrite history. We want to engage, engage in the future. And I think that we should, we should do that. I think that, I think this is a great idea for us to keep the statue and build other monuments to other people groups in the town. And that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Thanks, Kelly, for coming out tonight. Appreciate that. Okay, up next, do we have Bob Sergeant yet? Okay, why don't we go to, Bob, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Bob, we can hear you. Go ahead. Why don't you go next?
Oh, okay. I don't know. I couldn't get this thing to work right.
Okay, just give us your name and address.
Yeah, Bob Sergeant, twenty-five Birchcrest Drive. Uh, yeah, I've been sitting here listening for pretty much the whole evening about a lot of people who really, I would say, many, 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 many of them, I was there in twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen when this was going through. Most of them wouldn't know where to be found then, but now it's a pretty important thing since it's a hot topic. This was decided, decided by the Town Council in twenty seventeen that this would be put up. Are we gonna decide this every couple of years? Is that what we're gonna do? I, I, I don't get it because something's a hot button topic. It's brought right back up in front of the Town Council. I've been there in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty, asking to have an ordinance revisited. I get blank stares. You know, I mean, if you, if you, look, it's on public land. I, I've been in this town for fifty-nine years. I've never heard nonsense like this about things like this. We got a lot of good, good old Italian men here that were friends with my father. I know their kids. I've been in this town for my whole life. This is outrageous. This is outrageous that you as council people are sitting there revisiting this nonsense. This is outrageous that any of this is going on like this. And if you're gonna move this thing, move it right down in front of the sun, the sons of Italy. Put it right out in front there because when they start wanting to defund our town police, there's gonna be a place that the men in this town are gonna need to meet. Because that, that'd be the next thing that we're gonna be bringing up at the Town Council. We got all kinds of town business and things that actually need to be addressed not being addressed. We're spending hours on this. Complete waste of time. Unbelievable. You decided this once already and it's back up. And that's about, you know, I, I don't get it. I don't get why all of you are sitting there revisiting something that's been done. All that had been said was we did this in twenty seventeen, we're good. And that's about all I gotta say. Thanks.
Okay, Bob, thanks for coming out. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, up next, we have Rodney. Rodney, thanks for hanging in there, for starting and stopping.
Yep, no, no problem. Thank you for taking me. And good evening to all the Town Council and all fellow Suddington residents. I've been listening tonight, and I'm amazed at the amount of historians we have in the town of Suddington that have unique perspectives on history. And I think the interesting thing to note is the age difference and the perspective thereof. It seems like an older perspective who has been around the town for a long time or been alive for a number of years has a very different perspective from a younger generation. Incidentally, I'm Roger Gucci of one oh-two West Street in Plainsville. Forgot to say that. But the thing here that I think we need to talk about is the, is perspective. And perspective is an attitude. And perspective is an attitude towards a way of regarding something. It's one way that we interpret an action or a perception of what we see. And Columbus is one of those things. As Tony Morrison, I thought, said very well earlier, that Columbus Day is a national holiday and the statue is a tribute to discovery of America. And that perspective is a perspective that most Americans hold. It is not the perspective that he was a racist tyrant where racism didn't, the word racism didn't even exist back then. It was a way of life. And I think it's important that as American citizens, we're actually understanding and recognizing what that history was, good or bad. And I'm not here to be a proponent for or against Columbus as an individual, but you can't underscore his discovery, which is the United States of America. Columbus did do good and bad things, but who determines what is right? Why does one person's perspective matter more than others? Because somebody feels like they are, it's a racial issue that Black Lives Matter, that Columbus needs to come down, I think is very targeted the wrong way. I don't think it's giving an opportunity for the citizens, particularly the children of Southington, to understand it. For all of the people who have said earlier that they walked by the statue and feel insulted or feel triggered by the fact that the statue is there by the Board of Education, should be a perfect opportunity maybe to take your kids down there and explain both sides of the story. Explain what Columbus did, both good and bad. And I think that's the historical value of that particular statue. If we take a look at history and we say, let's look at one of the most amazing tragedies in the world. We would say it had to be the Nazis and the Jews and Auschwitz, right? Auschwitz still stands today. If it were a matter of taking Auschwitz down to erase what happened to the Jewish people, it would be down. But when asked, the people said it's to preserve authenticity. And that is the, the crux of this argument here is that we're here to preserve the authenticity of what happened with Columbus. And it's up to the individual and it's the individual's right to agree or not to agree, but, but, but to point out both sides of that story. The statue is up, the statue is there, the statue was voted on. It went through a democratic process and was approved. It should not be taken down. It should remain. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Rodney, thanks so much for coming out. Okay, we're gonna put Catherine Tiz back in. Catherine, did I get your name correct?
That's okay, it's a hard one. It's Tice. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that Catherine. Please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I'm going to read the letter, but I have a few interjections. I sent you all, all the members of the town council my letter. So you have a, you should have a hard copy of it. Dear members of the Southington Town Council and members of the community that are listening, I wrote to you a few weeks ago expressing my desire that the Christopher Columbus bus recently erected in front of the Southington Municipal Center be removed from town property. In my earlier email, I asked that you read more about the history of Columbus before moving forward with a decision on the issue. I'm grateful that you've opened up tonight's forum to the public so that we could all voice our opinions on the matter. I will expand on my previous letter here. For those who did not read my earlier letter, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Dr. Catherine Tice. I'm a resident of Southington of Curtis Street, a historian of Italian culture and an Italian American. After I graduated from Southington High School, I pursued bachelor's and master's degree in Italian and art history. Subsequently, I earned a PhD in Italian Studies from the University of Cambridge, where I defended a dissertation on Italian culture of the 15th and 16th centuries, the period in which Columbus lived. As a historian of Italian material culture, my research explores the making use and meaning of objects to people, both at the time in which they were made and in their afterlives. Therefore, I'm well suited not only to discuss the place of Columbus in Italian history, his legacy, the development of the myth of Columbus, but also what objects like this sculpture say about the society in which they're created and displayed. When I learned of the statue's impending installation in front of the municipal center, I was both horrified and disheartened to see this problematic historical figure was selected to represent my Italian American heritage, a culture that I have dedicated my entire life to studying. As many others have or will express tonight, Columbus became a figurehead for Italian immigrants to the US in light of prejudice and violence against Italians during waves of immigration in the late 19th century. Following a mythologized version of the history of Columbus written by Washington Irving, Columbus was selected as a figurehead and morphed into the ideal first Italian American. Irving was known to establish, to embellish historical accounts for entertainment value, is better known as a writer of fiction. No one believes that the headless horseman legend he wrote is real after all. Unfortunately, this oversimplified history fails to recognize that Columbus would not have considered himself Italian as Professor Donato explained earlier. Columbus was probably born in the city of Genoa, in the Republic of Genoa. The country of Italy did not exist until the mid 19th century, when the Italian peninsula was unified. For centuries prior to the Italian unification, the peninsula was composed of city-states, duchies, republics and territories, many of which were ruled by outside governments. For example, Rome was part of the Papal States and Naples was ruled by the Kingdom of Spain. These distinct governments did not think of themselves as a cohesive unit and would have often been in disagreement with their neighbors. Therefore, Columbus would have considered himself of Genoa's origin, not Italian. Prior to setting sail for his famous 1492 voyage, he moved to Spain and petitioned the Spanish monarchs for financial support and sailed on behalf of Spain, not Italy. Following his first voyage, he fashioned himself as a Spaniard, Cristobal Cologne, and tried to establish himself as a Spanish noble with a Spanish coat of arms. By the end of his life, Cologne fell out of favor with his Spanish patrons, spent time jailed for mismanagement of the colonies he was put in charge of, and ended his life alienated and in obscurity. Much of the heroic legacy of Columbus from his own time comes from his and his son's efforts at creating a narrative of his story. In the Renaissance, the period in which Columbus lived, acts of creating personal history and building up one's personal figure were popular, a behavior the scholars refer to as self-fashioning. We might compare it to the way in which modern influencers use social media to build up images of themselves to sell products. But we all know that social media accounts don't reflect a complete picture of their lives, but instead a glorified version. This is what historians use different archival documents for to round out the narrative of a person and to try to understand them within their society in which they lived. As an object historian, I can tell you that historical monuments tell us more about the society that erected them rather than the person or people they represent. Objects tell us about the beliefs and motivations of society and what they value. In 50 years, a historian looking at the Southington Columbus Monument will not look at it to tell us anything about Columbus. We have plenty of archival documents and sources for that. Instead, they'll point out that despite decades of research highlighting Columbus's problematic actions and criticisms of him, the town ignored such criticism and instead put up a monument to him. As a historian who studies interactions between text and images, particularly inscriptions, I can tell you they'll look at that inscription and not learn anything about Columbus. But instead, their analysis will point out, point out the oversimplified and exaggerated nature of the claims made in the inscription. They'll probably think that students of Southington learned only mythology and not history.
Go ahead Catherine, you wanna take 10 or 15 seconds to finish?
Sure. So is, is what you've heard about Columbus and appropriate representation of our town's values, do you think that Columbus is an appropriate representation of Italian Americans? I'm embarrassed that this statue has been used to represent culture that I love so much. And I just invoke you to, to think about all of, many of us are Italian, to think about our Italian ancestors and to think about those who could be honored in their, in their, in their image. So thank you for your time tonight. And if anybody would like to read my longer letter, I think it will be available with the town council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we did receive that, so thanks. Okay. Let me just go back to the list here. I know we have a few last ones. Uh, looks like Tevin, Tevin Jordan. How did I do, Tevin?
Hey, you did perfect.
All right. Thanks, Tevin. Floor is yours. Thank you.
My name is Tevin Jordan. I live at 161 Oakland Road in Southington, Connecticut. I am a graduate of Central Connecticut State University with a history degree and I currently work in cultural resource management. So I'd like to just state a few things, no, no, it's fine. I'd like to state a few things that I've just taken note of while listening to everyone state their opinions. Now, to those that stated that racism was just a way of life back then, well, racism is still alive today. And it's not any less wrong now than it was when Columbus sailed the ocean blue, as we learned in school. But as we know, history is ever-changing, it's ever-growing and not everything is black and white. Columbus was supported, respected. That is why these statues were erected, but as time has gone on, the story of Columbus has changed. Our perspectives need to grow along with that. Now, to those that stated that the Black Lives Matter movement is just an excuse to target the things that we hold dear to us, no, I believe what you're afraid of changing is the status quo, the way that things have run. But these things need to change. We need to be able to have these open conversations because Columbus was not a perfect individual. He was not the first person to come on to America. Technically, that was Eric the Red. So to say that we need to keep this statue up to create this fake imagery of a strong Italian culture, well, I believe you are shortcoming the other cultures that live in this town, such as myself, a Haitian American. I know I am of a few, but you need to listen to the voices of a few and not the voice of those who are loudest. I will yield the rest of my time. Enjoy the rest of your night, everyone.
Thank you, Tevin. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, so who's last? Victoria and then Patricia. And then I see Nora wants to also speak. Hi Nora. So do we have Victoria?
Yep.
Hi Victoria, the floor is yours.
Okay. Hi, my name is Victoria Ria of 105 Claudia Drive here in Southington. I've been a resident here for the past 16 years. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to hear everyone's voices and the opportunity to share my thoughts with the town council. I am in support of moving the statue to private property for many of the reasons that you've already heard. I did want to say a couple of things. There were a couple of town members who said that things like Black Lives Matters, Marxist, and we want to tear down churches and all that, that's not true. That's what's being spread about in social media. I also wanted to address Mr. Morrison, who mentioned that at Mount Rushmore, the Native Americans built the Crazy Horse Monument. I had the opportunity to go out west and his answer was that that's how you solve problems. Mount Rushmore is on stolen land that belongs to the Native Americans that is still in dispute today. And one of the people that are there is Teddy Roosevelt, who had nothing but negative things to say about Native Americans. So I know that's a little bit off on a tangent. I am support of the monument being moved and I am concerned about its placement there at town, the town building and what it says about our town. And I think we're better than that. I yield my time.
Okay. Victoria, thank you so much. Patricia and then Nora Matthews. Is Patricia still with us?
Okay. Am I here?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. All right. After many technical difficulties, I'm Patricia Hackett, 41 Dawn Lane. There are many, many who have spoken before me, who have reasoned the statue remain, spoke about dignity. Some very insightful and very fact-based and many good points were made. The statue are using half-truths and innuendo to rehash things that have long been known. Here are some of what I heard. When misinformation regarding what the early speaker Dylan had stated was pointed out to the person misquoting him, the person said that she didn't care. That statement summed up the attitude of the majority of people seeking to remove the statue. In fact, that person referred to herself as a descendant of Tiano people. But an earlier speaker on her side had previously said that Tiano population was reduced to zero. By definition, that would mean that there are no Tiano descendants. This is a classic example of the flaws and inconsistencies of the cause seeking the removal of this and other statues and the rewriting of history. Thank you for mentioning the first Italian immigrants to Southington. The very first Italian immigrant to settle in Southington was my great-great-grandfather, Gennaro Angelillo. My grandfather, Robert Morelli, was a founding member of the Sons of Italy and he was the first Italian-American president of the Southington American Legion. He fought in World War I on the, on the, on the American side and became a citizen. I would also like to state right here and now that I am not an Italian-American. I am an American. And this continued labeling of each other as hyphenated identities that is the source of so much of our current division and hostility. Please don't speak for me or my ancestors. My family and my ancestors have no problem with Columbus. Is he one that perhaps we would have chosen for history if we were around when it was written? Maybe not. But history is written and it was written by people who knew more than we do and who were far more knowledgeable. Shame on those of you who belittle others and tell us to be ashamed of ourselves. Shame on those on that side who are resorting to hateful messages, name-calling and inflammatory derogatory words. For those in my age group saying that we were only taught that Columbus was a hero, I say, I don't know what classes you took, but I learned the good, bad and indifferent about Columbus. Nothing being alleged now is news to me. For a Board of Education member to say that our Southington students are receiving an inadequate education in history is appalling to me. To those saying that the story has changed, well, the history and facts have not changed. Only the political environment has changed. I take issue with those who say we were not taught the full history of Columbus, Washington and others who came before us. If those younger than me do not know about the full history of Columbus, I submit that they did not choose to learn because they certainly were taught. Do not tell me or others what I do or do not know. Do not tell us that we are willfully ignorant of the interpretation of the world. And by all means, if someone wants a bust of Martin Luther King, let him or her raise one of numerous figures in this country who can be immortalized. We can have a small people, create a, most of us would love it. I warn you however, that people want to come down, not while you're still alive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. I just, just for the record, I did interrupt Dorothy to correct Dylan's statement and just to ensure that Dorothy is heard properly. She said she did not want to correct, she didn't want to correct Dylan's statement in the middle of her time, so. Okay, I don't want to go back and forth with it. We have, we have one more person on the computer. Nora, you're next. Patricia, thank you. Nora? Hi, yes.
Hi. I, my name is Nora Matthews and I live at 81 Academy Street, roughly a half mile from the municipal center where the Columbus statue is placed. I really appreciate that the town council is offering this opportunity for public comment on this issue today. It's certainly no secret tonight that this Columbus statue was a source of controversy when it was put up in 2017 and, and that statues of both Columbus and Confederate generals have recently been taken, that have been recently taken down in several places nationally, as well as several places in Connecticut. Far from a racing history, I think that the time, I feel that the conversations that are being had about all of these monuments.
Excuse me, Nora?
Yep.
I just, I just want to remind whoever's making comments in the background to keep your microphone on mute. Thank you. Apologies, Nora.
It's okay. I think that the conversations that are being had about our. I think that the conversations that are being had about our monuments nationally reflect that we are living in a really exciting time in that so many people are reflecting on our values and considering who and what we as a society have held up for honor in the past, whether we still believe those things and ultimately what the function of monuments in our town squares is and should be. It is a time of moral challenge. There are many issues with Christopher Columbus and his journals are primary sources detailing much of the concerns that others have brought forth. I'd like to highlight one here tonight for your consideration. As an educator, I noticed that the municipal center houses the Southington Board of Education. In 1500, Columbus wrote about the money that was, quote, "as easily obtained for a woman as for a farm" and it is very general and there are plenty of dealers to go about looking for girls. Those from nine to ten are now in demand. What he's describing in this letter is the sexual abuse of children for profit. I simply cannot agree that a monument to someone who participated in the sexual abuse of nine and ten-year-old girls is an appropriate tribute outside our Board of Education offices in the year 2020. Frankly, I find it embarrassing. I understand that the Italian-American community in this town raised funds for this statue and I think that it is important to recognize that one can have a problem with Christopher Columbus and not be against Italian-Americans who are valued members of the Southington community. It is absolutely shameful that early Italian-American immigrants faced such intense discrimination and it's important to recognize that this tradition of Columbus statues, someone earlier asked, what's the history of these statues? This vision of Columbus statues originally came about as a means for that community to draw attention to their value in our society. Both Italian and Irish communities in the eighteen hundreds used their understanding of Columbus's legacy then as a means to draw positive attention to their communities that were being discriminated against and to one degree or another, it worked. Maybe the embrace of Columbus mythology was a means to an end then. The question is, what is its usefulness now and what message does it send to those who face discrimination today? The people who are marginalized in our society see statues of Christopher Columbus as a tribute to someone who committed violence against non-white people. Whether or not this is your intention, we as a community need to wrestle with the impact and if it's worth it to let that message stand, my personal opinion is that morally, we should not. It is clear that the Italian-American community is very important to this town and it is right that it be celebrated. I simply submit that Christopher Columbus is an inappropriate figure for this purpose. I would absolutely be in favor of any monument that commemorates the memory of Italian-American lives that were lynched or possibly of another figure of note such as Galileo. I would also support placing this statue in a space devoted to historical education that encourages further study of Columbus as an historical figure. Right now, this monument is placed without context in front of the building that houses our Board of Education. I think our town can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Thanks for coming out. Okay, is there anybody that I missed on the computers that would like to speak? Valerie, thank you for raising your hand. Please, Valerie, the floor is yours.
Hi there, my name is Valerie Ragucci. I live at 102 West Street in Planceville. I've been a Southington resident for eighteen years. I am an Italian-American and I take pride in my heritage, my Italian heritage. I'm not going to go into details of Columbus. We know the history of who he was. As an Italian-American, I don't see Columbus in a negative light. I choose to celebrate his accomplishments of him being many, one of which being a great explorer. We know in the past, as it's been stated, that some of these, back in the past, it was, these were different times and there were brutal things that happened. But we have to acknowledge the positive as well. And I think this was acknowledged three years ago when the monument went up and it was a unanimous vote. There didn't seem to be any type of negative input at that time. I know there was a petition that went around, but the vote was unanimous and there were five different organizations that donated to put this monument up. And I think to remove it at this point would be very disrespectful to them. I know there was also a man named Dick Fortunato that was involved, the late Dick Fortunato, and I think it would be disrespectful to him as well to remove this monument. I think that we have to look to the past and honor Columbus's leadership and his accomplishments. I say no to any kind of updated plaque that wants to be placed on the monument because I think that is disrespectful as well and shedding a negative light on those positive accomplishments. I think this country is running on some kind of a new cancel culture mob that runs on emotions. And I don't think that, I think these emotions are driving this new culture to want to cancel out our history and I think it's wrong. And we need to recognize history and we need to honor it. So with that being said, you know, I vote and I urge our town to take a stand and to stand their ground, keep this monument up and say no to any updated plaques. I mean, I, I agree with Mike Ricchio that spoke earlier, we need to stop the hate. And I feel removing this monument is a an effort and it's a show of hate. So I thank you for your time and I appreciate you giving me that, this platform to speak.
Thank you, Valerie, for coming out.
You're welcome.
Anybody else that's on the computer that we missed that would like to raise their hand and speak before we move to the phone lines? Okay, I think we did get everybody on the computer. I see that we have sixteen call-ins, Madam Chair, if it's okay with you. I'll unmute all the call-ins. And then we can see who's, who's ready to talk. It's going to be a little noisy because we can't tell who's who right now, but we're going to have to unmute everybody and then mute everybody who's not talking. So if it's possible. Well, is there, is there any call-in person who would like to speak now?
Yes, I would. I would.
Okay. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep, this is Michael Fasulo, 77 Shire Drive. Been a resident of Southington for sixty-one years. I'm not going to refer to research that's done. I'm not going to quote historians or song titles and lyrics. But if someone said, we're all entitled to our opinion. And I would like to give my now briefly, as I'm sure you will all appreciate. I'm just going to read a brief email that I sent to the council. I am protesting the protesters that are demanding the statue be removed. Right or wrong, Columbus played a part of our history, all of our histories. In my opinion, to try and erase history is wrong. The world five hundred years ago was nothing like it is today. Who's to say that you or I would not live the life as it was back then? If we listen to the protesters that pop up every day against something, we will end up living as if our history did not exist. I feel that it is more important that you, I and every protester put our efforts into making this world a better place to live in, rather than try and erase what happened five hundred years ago. Taking down a statue is not going to change the way we treat each other. Educating everyone on equal rights can. I'm against removing the statue and I thank you for your time.
Okay, Mike, thanks so much for coming out. Okay, so I put all the other phones on mute. I'm going to just unmute them all again. And see if we can.
Can I come in?
Is there somebody else on the phone who would like to speak?
Yeah. Right here.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rob Lala from Forty Spring Avenue.
Oh, boy. We hate Columbus.
I've been. Excuse me?
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I was getting some background noise. I've been a resident of Southington my entire life. I was stationed in Vicenza, Italy in, from two thousand and three to two thousand and six. So I had a little insight on, you know, how he was representative or not representative in, in the country of Italy. I was also deployed in Afghanistan for a year and I was at the actual site where the Taliban destroyed a monument. So I've seen both sides to this issue and no one is saying that we're going to destroy a statue of Columbus. That's the last thing we should be thinking about. Should it be in front of our municipal building, municipal building? Absolutely not. I, you know, sent a email earlier tonight. As far as I'm concerned, there should be a distinct separation of church and state. I see Columbus as a religious deity. People look at him as this mythical, you know, type of entity. There's so many other people we could be, you know, that could represent my Italian history, my Italian heritage. As my, my, my family's been in this town for over a hundred years at least. You know, I feel like saying that it's some type of representation of me is preposterous. And I, I just feel that very strongly that if we don't do the right move right now, somebody will do it for us. And I would never, ever promote, you know, doing things, you know. But you can see what's happening in, in the, the town of Waterbury. Things are happening. We need to get proactive as town, you know, leaders and make sure that we protect this statue by putting it in a place that, that it should be, not like either behind, you know, in a museum at the Knights of Columbus. By the way, I was a third-degree Knights of Columbus member when I was at Norwich University. I studied military history for three years. I, I, I've been in and around monuments and it's just, it floors me that this town has not moved into the twenty-first century. And I, I, I just, I'm completely floored by, by why this conversation is still going on. Like I, I, there's a few callers back a few minutes ago who she was so eloquent and I can never do what, what she did. But you really have to do some soul searching right now and figure out if this is how we want to be represented. And I can guarantee you, like if this, like this is not going to be the last time you're going to hear from us. So we can just keep on kicking the can down the road, but I guarantee you, my son or my, well, well, or my ancestor, whoever's behind me, will make sure that statue is removed. That's all.
Okay. Okay, let's see. Okay, I'm going to unlock the phones one more time here. Is there someone else on the phone who would like to have an opportunity to speak?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm named Sharon DuKos and I live at 52 Memorial Drive in Southington. And I was born and raised in Southington and republed American. And I wrote something to the council and I'd like to read it. Dear Town Council, writing today is in the discussion of Christopher Columbus statue residing in our great town. Although I am sensitive and even understanding of many of my neighbors' concerns, I fear that by removing this historical monument, we are setting a dangerous precedent of, of our future. Statues and monuments serve as symbols of our history and remembering our history accurately is critical for growth and progress, both with insured for better for our future for all of us. I believe we have a responsibility to remember not only the bright spots of our past, but also those missteps and pitfalls. History needs to remain objective so we can critically analyze the facts for years to come. And objectively speaking, our history as a nation and as a people is completely and even messy at times. I contend that most, if not all leaders, disruptors and changed agents of our past bears some controversy in their character. History is not only created by flawless men and women. At this time of such distress with our communities, I hope that our collective history, the good, the bad and the ugly, can unite us and objectively in understanding how far we have come, as well as how much more work we have left to do. And thank you for your time.
Okay, Sharon, thank you so much. Okay. Let's go back and move the phones. Do we have anybody on the phone who would like to speak? Anybody else who's a dial-in that would like to speak during the public hearing?
I do.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Stacy Bowen, 55 Vermont Ave. I have been a Southington resident all my life. And I also first want to say that I think it's interesting that we had a doctor of Italian history on the phone and yet still people didn't listen to her and want to believe the history they just Googled this week. So I thought that was kind of funny. But I would like to say that I was never the best student in school and history and math were my absolute worst subjects. But even I knew Columbus wasn't a stand-up guy. And let's make sure we get the facts straight, that this is specific to our Columbus statue erected five years ago, not ones in other states. There was an uproar when the public had no say when this was voted on. Due diligence was not done and people are still upset now. I don't think the town council acted in malice, but I do think they were overzealous and made a big faux pas. I think an apology needs to be made to the public for the fact that the vote on the statue and a promise that it won't happen again. I think more thought was put in to recognize the Italian-Americans more than the actual history. Just because people were raised believing Christopher Columbus was a great guy doesn't negate from what we have learned and how we have grown as a people as time goes on. I do not want taxpayers' money to move the statue. But if it happens to disappear and end up at the Italian Club or somewhere else, I would be very happy about it. And also, I don't think I'm a Marxist. I just never liked the idea of the statue to begin with. I thought it made us look stupid in 2017 because we just should have known better and that is it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stacy, for calling in. Okay, let me open up the phone lines again. Okay, is there somebody else on the phones who would like to speak? Yes. Do we have any other call-in participants who would like to participate in the public hearing? Okay, right now, any, any other call-ins that would like to speak?
I'm not saying a word. No way, I put Tommy.
Okay, anybody else that would like to speak? Going one? I hear you. Please state your name and address for the record. Okay, yeah, if you could just come closer to the microphone.
Paul.
Hello?
Hello, yes.
Hi there, Paul.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, we're, we're, there's here, so it's got a little confusing. Shut my microphone off on the phone. It's Sue Zabahaski, 28 Working Street in Planceville. I have a few things I want to ask. First of all, the person who said discussing about separation of church and state. I'm surprised he doesn't know the true meaning of that. The separation of church and state, first of all, does not mean that people cannot demonstrate their religious beliefs in public or on government property.
Sue, if you can, I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you.
They cannot be prosecuted by the states for their beliefs. So that we need to hear something.
Sue, can you please move closer to?
this as exciting times and that's kind of a, a term I wouldn't necessarily use for what's going on right now. As we saw from all the testimony from people who spoke out on either side, there's confirmation in history by famous historians and by people who have spoken about what exactly Columbus did and did not do. So, um, I just want to say that during these trying times, people on all sides of the political spectrum are highly inflamed and acting in reactionary fashions without much consideration for words or actions. Um, the idea that's been brought up mainly on social media platforms are removing statues, um, as if removing these statues somehow would make matters of injustice in our history better. Um, I present a different narrative to that. I don't think that removing statues, um, make injustice that occurred any better. As a mother of a very curious eleven-year-old, these statues give me many opportunities to discuss our country's, um, history with her. It keeps a live dialogue of both the good, the bad and even the painful. So if I walk into the municipal center and my daughter has questions about that statue, it, it keeps it in sight and it. The raising a monument is a poignant human test and it becomes more poignant as time changes its meaning. There's so many monuments that we could talk about. The Ark of Titus in Rome, for example, commemorates the destruction and thundering of the Temple of Jerusalem. That's a massive act of violence that was celebrated to, to, to display the power of the violence. Um, by now, no crime could be reassessed or remedied by pulling it down. It has become a part of ancient history, which means whatever motive is an effort to erase American history. No matter how pain or unjust our history is, it is to learn from. So if we do remove history and replace it with a new story, change a whole culture to suit the times, I'm not suggesting that people have been mistreated and abused in the past, but to erase history by removing a statue sure won't help anyone to learn from it. It's important we remember our past and build on the progress we've made. And so to be a town of progress, as many keep bringing up, follow what everybody else is doing. If we're a town of progress, we're not followers. Um, as people, we're all prone to error. Those errors do not negate all the good we do in our lives. It's so important that we come together in unity to recognize that while we are all flawed people, there's a greater purpose for each of us. Humbling ourselves and recognizing our differences is a great start, but erasing history by removing a statue does nothing but attempt to eliminate it from our sight. The removal of the statue at the municipal center, um, which was purchased through private funding efforts and installed years ago after following proper procedures and a unanimous decision for its placement by the town council, two members at least who are on that council today, um, you know, it was put up the right way, so I don't believe it should be, um, taken down. He wasn't in Columbus, you know, though as many people brought up, if there was no technical belief back then. Um, he's not without controversy, but he courageously sailed into the unknown. This paved the path for some of the world's most famous explorers, which allowed trade routes into the New World. The statue is intended to celebrate the large Italian population and heritage. While I'm not Italian, it doesn't offend me. If you, if you're in support of keeping the Columbus statue, um, I think you should.
Tom.
We've had presented by our town people. Um, I think that's certainly a great way to go. I do believe in the democratic process and I'm hoping that like ours can do right there.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, appreciate it. Okay. All right. So, um, I'm, it looks like, uh, before we open the lines, looks like we have a request. We'll, we'll continue to go through the phone lines and it looks like, uh, Robert Tonan will, will get you after we're done with the, uh, with the call-ins. We have a handful of call-ins left. So let me, is there anybody else that's on the phone that called into tonight's meeting that would like to speak, uh, at the public hearing tonight? Any call-in users? Any call-in participants that would like to speak at the public hearing? Going once, twice? Okay, Robert, if you would like to unmute yourself, uh, you can have the floor for five minutes. Robert Tonan.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I agree with Susan and a lot of other people about, yeah, these are not exciting times because exciting, exciting times are something to look forward to. This is, it's horrible what's going on in this country and I'm concerned, to me personally, I, I, I don't want to see the statue moved, but if asked to be moved, then I think the town council should guarantee and maybe the public that there will never be another statue put on public property again because you're setting a precedence. I mean, right now, what happens, where does it end? If that statue is moved, where does it end? The next, does somebody start protesting because the World War II monument doesn't have enough female, you know, representation on it for, I don't know, dead soldiers? I mean, there's, it, it's, it's starting to get ridiculous. I mean, say at the Korean, you, you have other war memorials on the town green. I mean, somebody could protest anything about that. What are you going to start removing those? I mean, this will set a precedence from now for the next, I don't know how many years, but if that statue is moved, there's, we're gonna, and anybody proposes another, there's going to be an outpouring of protest for any other statue that is proposed. So everybody better think really, really, uh, strong about this because, you know, and then there's a lot of misinformation. I mean, yeah, somebody in town saying how well she studied, she's a study of history and historian, blah, blah, blah. Well, if you look up and there's a woman, Laura Delaney, and she's, she's an anthropologist and if you read her writings, and I trust her writings more since she is a anthropologist, but if you, if you read about some of her writings, what, what some of these people are saying are, is absolutely ridiculous. And, and, and I think, you know, people ought to research this a little more. Um, so that, that's just my two cents worth.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Madam Chair, I think we've, uh, we've gone through all of the call-ins and all of the, uh, computer participants for this public hearing. Did you want to say anything before?
Yeah, I just want to close it down a little bit. I want to thank everybody for all of their opinions and all of their statements. Uh, it was, uh, um, sometimes quite moving on both sides and, uh, I'm very glad that we've had the opportunity to hear, uh, very thoughtful and provoking, um, information tonight. So we're going to close down, we're going to close down the public hearing right now. I want to thank you all. We are going to open up our regular scheduled meeting and we started already with, uh, the roll call, the prayer and the flag salute. Uh, so right now I'm going to look for, um, a motion to accept the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, June twenty-second, two thousand and four minutes.
Thank you. Who seconded it?
Chris Palmieri.
Chris Palmieri. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, let's go on. Uh, item three, councilmatic communication. Does anyone have any councilmatic communications they'd like to share? Nothing? Okay.
Mr. Pulis.
Yeah, Mr. Pulis?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, thank you. Um, I just want, I want to take a moment and I just want to, um, thank publicly all of the residents of the town, you know, for the public hearing. Um, this is, it's a, it's a challenging issue and of all the issues that have come in front of the council since I've served, I think we'd all agree, like in the last four years, we've received more input on the Christopher Columbus statue than any other matter. More input on this than taxes, economic development, on schools, budgets, even the pandemic. And, um, you know, this week, uh, Councilman Palmieri, Councilwoman DePaul and I, uh, met to review a lot of the written communications and I'm sure everyone on the council would agree, the comments we heard tonight, um, and here are the hundreds of letters and emails and texts and calls we've received. Um, the comments from both sides of this issue have been thoughtful. They've been based on research, research and history. Many have been emotional. There are some folks that are angry, some that are annoyed, others that are upset, and there are people that are devastated. And, you know, when we talked, um, Councilman Palmieri, Councilwoman DePaul and I, it was sad during our deliberations that the singular trend we identified from the public, um, is that, like, on this issue, we're a divided community. And as town leaders, this, this concerns us. Uh, we feel this way because we believe our job on the council is to discourage division and to proactively seek ways to unite the people of our town. This shouldn't be about two sides fighting, one group winning, another group losing, but rather collective thoughtful effort to find a path forward to consensus, unite our community. And so, um, I, we sat down and we drafted a proposal to that end and we're not asking for the council to take action tonight. We're not asking you to put this on the agenda tonight. We want, would rather have you, um, review our proposal, uh, for our path forward, offer some feedback in a collaborative way to us on our draft document and then, uh, perhaps we can place this on the August agenda for a public discussion.
Okay, so Mr. Pulis, are you making a motion to place, uh, a, a vote on the August agenda?
Well, um, let me, before, before we go there, let me just take a, a minute to give you an overview of what we've discussed and then I'm going to share it with you to, um, I'm going to share it with you, uh, and, um, in consultation with Minority Leader Palmieri, uh, as you develop the agenda, um, perhaps we can, you can make that decision after you've had a chance to digest it. I don't think it's fair to make a motion to put something on an agenda tonight. We're still processing a lot of the input we've gotten, but I would like to share our thinking and I'd like to share it with you and, um, have it, it, put it into the minutes and then hopefully collaboratively we can work over the next couple of weeks. We'd have a month till our next meeting, um, and, uh, we can work to have a discussion of this topic. And, and, and let me just be, I'm going to briefly, I want to briefly share what we were thinking. We'd like to propose that the town council form a commission. A commission to, to determine a thoughtful and appropriate path forward regarding the Christopher Columbus statue that's located in town, uh, on town land. And we think that the commission members should consist of representatives from a number of organizations, stakeholder organizations. Um, we think that, uh, some of these organizations, and these are just a preliminary list, we, we would want to collaboratively discuss this with, with all the counselors, but, um, representative from the Sons of Italy, from Unico, from the Knights of Columbus, from Sorrel de Italia, from the Calvinist Foundation, those five organizations fundraised the money for the statue, but also included a representative from the Progressive Women of Southington, the Southington Historical Society, who knows our town history the best, um, the town diversity committee that was formed during the last council, a student representative from the Board of Education Diversity Community, a member from a faith-based community in town, a Southington resident who is involved with the NAACP. Um, we would have members of these committees, they wouldn't be elected officials, they wouldn't be, uh, people from town political committees, they would be Southington residents. And our town manager and town attorney could, um, facilitate this conversation as ex-officio co-chairs. And, and our rationale is that this is an issue that divides, it's a complicated social issue, it's not a political matter. It's a political vote of yes or no that will further divide our town. We believe the commission's charge should come to consensus on a path forward for residents, come to consensus, um, with the goal of uniting our town. And what that means is the commission wouldn't vote. They might choose to consult experts, convene community input sessions, host panels, review what other towns have done, um, what other active, uh, think of any activities that, that will inform them, the commission and inform our community so that we could try to identify a unified path forward. There has to be a third way. And lastly, we would have like a, a timeline, like a January twenty-twenty-one date for the commission to make a recommendation to the town council.
Mr. Pulis, I really, I, I, I'm listening to you. Um, I have a lot of concerns about that because I think it would perpetuate the, the schism that is happening in our community. I, I have some concerns about that. I will open it up for, uh, for the conversation right now, um, to see what the rest of the council feels. Um, I'm very concerned about prolonging this thing and going on. We have heard from the Sons of Italy, we have heard from the, the Unico Club, we have heard from the Knights of Columbus, we have heard from all of those. Tonight, we heard from the, from the people, from the women of progress, uh, but also regular people who want to just talk about it, some pro, some con. We have been inundated. Tonight, tonight I have over a hundred letters that will be included on our minutes. I don't think we, we are put in place to make the hard decisions and I can't see going on further and further on this thing. But I, I, I don't want to close it down. I don't want to, I don't want to just close it. I want to hear from the rest of the council. I don't know if anyone has any, uh, input that they would like to do. I'm not saying that, uh, I want to close it down necessarily, but the wound is open. We have heard from every strata in Southington, from the last two, the last meeting and now this meeting, I cannot see what we're going to learn from carrying this on till January. We are put in place to make the hard decisions and for me, anyway, um, that, that if we can't make those decisions, then we, we're in the wrong business. People put their trust in us, you know? Every person that spoke today, I, I felt very strongly about. I was moved, uh, by many people that spoke, both pro and con, both personal experiences and, 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 uh, philosophical discussions, but we've heard it. We've had letters, people are still writing letters tonight, which we'll get them out to everybody tomorrow. What does anybody think? I want to just.
Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo here.
Yes, Mike.
Madam Chair, Sue. I think it's a valiant effort by Mr. Pulis and Mr. Palmieri and Mr. DePaul, I do, but I don't think anyone's changing their minds. The people that spoke tonight, the letters that we received, their mindset is in place and we can have meetings until we die. People that spoke for it are going to remain for it, the people that spoke against it are going to remain against it. So I think it'll be fruitless going forward. I think the discussion is done. We've heard from a ton of people tonight. We've received hundreds of letters. I just don't see the need to continue to kick this can down the road. We all agreed at the last meeting to have this public input session. We've had it. Um, I don't think there were many surprises tonight. Uh, a lot of the people that spoke have been very vocal, either for or against, over the last few weeks, over social media, through letters, through emails. Um, you know, I just don't know, you guys asked for this public hearing, you've had the public hearing, this is your plan? Um, is there an alternate besides forming a commission to move on for the next six months? Or do you have another option? I wasn't sure.
I, I'll just respond, Mike and Vicky, I just think that, um, this is going to be a conversation of hate and division unless we try to put forward an infrastructure, we all think this, that is one that provides a thoughtful path forward, a third way. And I do think that this isn't a binary decision. I think that it's a complex social issue and it, and stakeholders need to have, have ownership and an opportunity to, um, sit down in a facilitated environment and, and, and come to consensus.
So, so they have spoken, both sides have spoken. I'm not sure what you expect them to say when they come together. I, I, I think, I, anyway, I want to hear from the rest of the council. I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to, to.
Madam Chair, could I be heard?
Who's that?
Madam Chair, this is Bill.
Oh, yes, of course, Chris, go ahead.
Uh, or.
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry, I thought it was Chris. Pardon me, this is very small.
So I think, I think Councilman Pulis's idea in part is pretty good, actually. I think that some sort of committee established out of this meeting, um, would, you know, positively move this town forward, but I still think you could, the public, the public deserves a vote on this. So I think you could still have a vote tonight and then still put forward this committee, which, you know, could come up with, you know, potential resolutions down the road. Um, so I would absolutely still be in favor of taking action tonight on the issue and having the committee going forward in the future. So I think you could still have a vote tonight and then still put forward this committee, which, you know, could come up with, you know, potential resolutions down the road. So I would absolutely still be in favor of taking action tonight on the issue and having the committee going forward in the future.
Okay, thank you.
If I can weigh in.
Sure, Chris.
First of all, I disagree with Bill. We actually spoke specifically about not acting tonight. And to say we're going to act tonight, especially at 10:30, when we had so many people from the public come out and have since left. If you look at our enrollment, it's significantly less than what it was before. I think it's a disservice, only especially because we had said specifically we would not do that last time. So that's the first point. Second of all, the public hearing, I think, was, and Vicky, you, myself and Tom were on the council that was referenced several times. There were three of us. I know they kept saying- So, and honestly, I, I listened to the public then and no, there wasn't a public hearing and there wasn't an adequate opportunity for the public to speak. And that's part of the healing process is to give people an opportunity to speak, and we actually did that tonight. We've, we've heard, as Chris said earlier, from more residents on this issue. And I don't, I don't know, Vicky, you've been on the council longer than me, but my entire time, I don't think I've ever had such an outcry from the public for any topic on the council. And we've had some doozies of issues to be addressed, but this topic certainly has resonated with residents. So therefore, allowing us to try to find a way to unite the community and bring the community together, rather than a start vote now or the next meeting, I don't, I don't know if that's the best answer either. I think that's almost a disservice. Rather than trying to research a little bit more, find out some of the facts, because a lot of people were speaking things that weren't necessarily true to them, you know, and this would allow the opportunity to have historians weigh in and to have professors and people that are knowledgeable on the topic we're talking about weigh in.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jim.
First of all, I agree that if this was a pressing issue that was so important for all the people in Southington, they would have remained to see what discussion we would have. And I can tell you, based on about 90% of the names that I see here, it's people that are in favor of keeping the statue there. Now, we talked, you talk about having more investigation, more study. I did some quick study myself. One of the callers mentioned a lady named Carol Lowry Delaney. Now, she has a PhD. She, she's a Harvard Interpolate. She's tied to Stanford University and Brown University, and she flat out says that Christopher Columbus did not do anything people said he did. So are we going to go back and forth and quote this person and that person, this student and that student? At the end of the day, nobody talked about the reason why that statue is there. And the reason why that statue is there is that early Italian immigrants that came to Southington were harsh, and they worked together to teach themselves English, to establish businesses, to make money, buy homes, then help the rest of the community. And that's why you have Unico Club and the Sons of Italy, because those people dug in and they, they overcame their oppression and they used Christopher Columbus as an idol. Now, it was also said tonight that this is a generational divide, and I totally agree with that. I had a huge argument with my son about Christopher Columbus being equivalent to Hitler. So obviously, my education and my son's educational background are totally different. So again, I don't think the argument is whether the town association is not progressive. The issue is that a group of people that were oppressed in their history found that they had someone that they idolized and they, and they wanted to memorialize that person at the town hall. They followed the proper procedures. They had it approved unanimously. And here we sit trying to second guess what happened in 2017.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Councilwoman, Madam Chair?
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, so I think, I think we all agree that the public provided some very insight, you know, both for and against. Couple of the notes that I wrote down this evening was that, you know, one of, one of them was that, you know, the Christopher Columbus statue represents Italians. I actually disagree with that. As it currently stands, it's national holiday, okay? And another, another snippet that I caught was somebody said, "People interpret the statue to mean X, Y, and Z." Okay, so if we're going to sit there and worry about what every statue is interpreted by each person, you know, we're going to have to go around town and take a look at a lot of other things and what people may interpret them as. But for me, and I think for, for the members that initially voted on this and that the purpose of the national holiday is to celebrate the American spirit. We're celebrating exploration. We're celebrating a new voyage. We're celebrating bravery. We're celebrating discovery. You know, connecting the old world to the new. Never in my life have I heard anybody say, "Oh, Christopher Columbus was a murderer. Let's celebrate that." That's just not the way it works. So yes, there's a divisive nature to this statue and it's very unfortunate because it's not intended to be that way. And I, and I know I speak for the other counselors who voted for it in 2015, that that was not the intent of it. But are we going to sit here and study history about what happened 500 years ago? Or how bad of a person they were for the actions that they took? It was, it was a horrible time and it was, they were conquerors. You know, they were, they were coming from a different era. Let's think about this. We are all sitting here wearing clothes that were probably made by slave labor in a communist country. Okay, but we're worried about something that happened 500 years ago that's completely taken out of context. So that's kind of the way I'm viewing it, and I do find it unfortunate that it's a divisive topic because I don't think anyone intends it to be that way, whether it be the Italian community or we are all Americans, so let's bring it together. And let's show the rest of, let's show these other towns that we can bring people together. And lastly, you know, I think one of the, the people who wanted to keep the statue up went after the opposition as, you know, being Marxist and everything. I don't agree with that either. I think the opinions are valid on both sides of it. So I think we need to not, obviously everyone's entitled to their own opinion. They could say what they want, but that, that kind of divisive talk, it really gets us nowhere. So that's all I have for comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul.
Yeah, just, I agree with a lot of what's, what's being said here and I appreciate a lot of the, the different perspectives. I would agree that I would agree that, you know, going forward, we should, we should have some sort of committee looking, looking at, you know, how do we take the next step in our community for diversity and inclusion? That considers, you know, some of the things going on today. And I know we have some committees going on. From my perspective, there's, I mean, there was a great perspective on, you know, both the keeping the statue and removing the statue. I think, you know, everybody articulated their positions very well. You know, from my perspective, removal is, you know, removal of the statue is, is, you know, it's final. So I do think that, you know, the people who came out and spoke, whether for or against, I think we owe it to them to make a decision. I think there's a perception that the request last, last meeting that was made, right or wrong, the perception is that a decision is going to be made about the statue. And I think that, you know, we can achieve what we'd like to achieve by, you know, giving some closure to the discussion about the statue as it is today. But then also initiating some sort of a go-forward committee that also addresses some of the concerns that are, you know, that were brought up, whether it's, you know, adding additional content in the area, whether adding more diversity and inclusion. We heard good things about tonight. You know, about, you know, recognizing other groups that might want to be recognized as well. And how do we help those groups to get the recognition that they deserve? And so I think, you know, we could do both. I think we could have some, some closure on what people expect, some decision on the statue. And, and get the, the committee that, that we're, you know, being asked to consider here as well.
So let me just say some clarification, Paul. So you are saying that we can do both. Is that what you're saying? So do we, do we leave this here and go through this process?
You know, well, first of all, Councilperson Poulos was going to say something, so I'm not, you know, making a final statement on this. We are in councilmatic communications, right? We're not on a, on a specific agenda topic, so, you know, at some point, the question is whether there's a move to make a motion on an agenda at some point. But my, my, my comment is that I do think that going forward, we should have some sort of a committee that includes some of the folks that were mentioned a little earlier, because I do think that there are some steps that we can and should be taking to, to take the next step in progress. But I also think that the people who came out deserve a decision on the statue.
I see. Okay, very good. So I think everybody spoke. Val, I don't think spoke. Val, did you want to add your comments? You're all set?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just was listening to everybody's thoughts. I, I just think this is, you know, I'm just going to speak from my heart. I, I I heard a lot, I do thank everyone who spoke tonight on both sides. It's, it is very important and it's such an important, it's so important for everybody to have that opportunity. I think what we were looking at is, I don't believe we're looking to kick the can down the road. I think we were just trying to look at it from a perspective of being, of trying to be a little bit more unified. We understand that the buck stops with us. We, we're not going to shirk our responsibility to take this vote. You know, I think back, I heard it many times tonight, people saying we can do better. And I think we, I think I heard that on both sides. And I always think of Maya Angelou's, Maya Angelou said, "When, when we know better, we do better." And I just believe over time, we have learned things and we have always looked to do better. So I just want the council to understand that we're not, we're not shirking our responsibility, we're not kicking the can down the road. We were just looking for something else that might maybe make this a little bit more unified in a decision. So that, you know, that's my feeling on that. I would like to, I would like to also raise an issue that I've been thinking about, and it's along the lines of what Councilperson Chupinski has mentioned. I do think we need to have a multicultural network in our town. I think we have to have a movement. And I think for us, as councilpeople, we have to do a lot of listening. I don't think we do enough listening. And I think we have to get people that are experts in this area of diversity and inclusion and equity. I think, I think we need to have maybe some training and some, some education. And it needs to be, it needs to be a network that maybe kind of gets a movement going in Southington. I think so. After hearing everything tonight, I do think we're, we're divided. And I'd like to see us move in a, in a positive direction going forward.
Yeah, I think that's, that's very true. I think we all kind of share that too, Val. You know, Chris Palmieri and I met with Pastor Ron Brown. And he is going to begin probably in September, as soon as we get the okay to open things up a little bit more, a, a forum or a community conversation on these kinds of issues. I think that's a fabulous place for us to start because it's open for all folks and we can and it's not, it's not council-run because, but it would be great if we could listen to all of this stuff. So I think we're in the right direction going there and opening up ourselves and opening up the community for serious dialogue. And in diversity, we need, we need that dialogue. Don't forget, we have, we are going through a change in our community. You know, the, there are new folks. We, we heard a lot of new young people coming up with great ideas and, and vision and passion. And we as a community must form a place for them. And I, I agree with that. So we have that established right now with, with Pastor Ron Brown of First Congregational Church, hoping to start in September. And there is opportunity. I think we should come to something process or workshops or whatever, that we can open them up so that we all get educated and that community can grow together. I, I agree completely. This particular issue, this statue, we are now here, this is, we have been receiving all this information and letters. And I agree with Paul in that they deserve an answer from us. And not just, and I understand, I didn't mean to implicate that we were just, that, that your idea was to kick the can down the road. But I think that the time has come where there has to be a decision made on this, and we've heard it all. So, I mean-
In that regard though, should we, should, since this is councilmatic communication, should we stop and maybe let's formally add this as an agenda item to discuss this further in this meeting? With what, what the action is going to be? Let's, let's, let's motion to put this on the actual agenda for discussion so we can take some kind of a decision.
You're looking for action on what?
It sounds, it sounds like there's a proposal that's out there. My, my point is, rather than us continuing to debate it here, let's debate it, let's debate it in the agenda tonight, that we're in an area where we're supposed to debate it, not during councilmatic communications.
Well, I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to voice their opinion, Paul. So, I can, we can, I don't know if we want to continue. We have public communication coming up. Where would you like, do you want, you guys make the, the suggestion and then we can put it to a vote.
It sounds like Councilperson Poulos wants it.
Madam Chair, so again, the intent from, our intent was to share a draft document, which I've emailed to all of you for you to take it in and process it. And, you know, maybe that this deserves a place for discussion. This or some other topic or action deserves a place for discussion at the August meeting, once we've had it, once you've had a chance to read what we've written. You know, the last thing I would want to do is discuss and move something that you haven't read. And again, it's a draft and we, we're looking for like collaborative feedback. Maybe it's not this, but maybe it's some version of this that gets us to a path to unity, a unified path in our town where stakeholders, people that worked hard, raised money, have a seat at the table or have some, some mechanism for input. It may look different, but I think we should discuss next meeting.
So, okay, so Chris, let me just ask you quickly. You emailed that to all of us, your proposal?
I just did, along with the town manager Shota and the town clerk.
So right now, during the meeting, you did that? Right now, during the meeting?
Sure, I wanted to introduce it before I shared the draft.
Okay, well, I think what we'll do is, let's go on with our meeting. We can, if anyone wants to throw their talk on this, they would have to make a motion so that we could talk more about it. If not, we do have a meeting in August. But I will tell you very strongly that, that I believe that the people who spoke today, wrote letters, called, they deserve an answer. And so I will not entertain, I will not entertain an ongoing debate on this thing. I, they deserve an answer from us. What we do subsequent to that, whatever happens after the, after the, the answer to the people, if we want to form a committee afterwards, I'm certainly open for that. But, but right now, my stand is, and I feel very strongly, and I, it sounds like other people are agreeing with me, that for right now, we, and we can do it next, next week. We had told folks we were not going to move tonight. But, so we can, we can meet in August, but I will expect action in August. I think it's, it's vital that we, you know, we're putting it off another month. These people have been waiting for months and months to talk. So anyway, so that, I'm going to, I'm going to close it down there. Is everybody okay with that? So we will handle this in August. Any other councilmatic communications? Anybody?
What council? Why do we have a, why do we have a public hearing if there's no action?
Well, we, well-
So, if I could respond again, we, we, when I suggested the public hearing, both Val, and I agree with her, and Mike, and I agree with Mike, both said they do not want action tonight. And all agreed with that. And, and again, I appreciate the input from Val and Mike, and I agree with it. And that's what we decided on and stated publicly in the meeting.
Yes, you're right. That's exactly right. So that's what I'm saying. Uh, it's okay to, to put this on for August. I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. It was public. It was public. All right, well, let's move on. Is that okay, Jim? You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, thanks. Um, any other councilmatic communication? Uh, having talked about the meeting with uh, with uh Pastor uh, uh Ron Brown, I thought that was very interesting, Chris. Thank you for being part of that. I think it's gonna be a very good uh addition to the community. Uh, any other councilmatic communication? Okay, okay. Uh, moving on, reported special committees. Uh, first is Public Works, Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna be very brief tonight. It was a really quick meeting. We had about a week, uh, week and a half, a couple of weeks ago. Um, some of the topics were the bulky, uh, bulky waste transfer station. Uh, Annette spoke that the first week in June was exceptionally busy due to the closure on Memorial Day weekend, has settled down uh since. Um, we are keeping an eye out for folks that are posting on social media that they're doing dump runs, which is fine as long as they're doing dump runs for residents of Southington. Uh, we did see a couple of posts where folks from out of town are asking, hey, can you do a pickup in Nagatuck? And folks are saying, well, send me a PM. There's no PMing about it, okay? Southington residents, I mean, the transfer station is for Southington residents and it's being paid for by the Southington taxpayers. And uh, we will only accept items from Southington. So if folks are out there caught doing that, they're, you know, uh, we're looking for that. And the Public Works Department, the Highway Department is, is cracking down on it. Um, after the Fourth of July, uh, this past week, they started using the scanners again. They were using, using the clickers up until then, but they're using the scanners now. Uh, so that's the transfer station. Uh, road projects up, updates, um, they've been pulling curbs, driveway aprons, cutting back vegetation, your normal summertime work, okay? Toll con is reclaim, uh, uh, starting this past Monday. And milling will begin uh on the fifteenth, which is a couple of days from now. Uh, the high school parking lot, uh, the project of Sun and House, and they're, uh, they're just got done with the rough grading. Uh, it started a couple of weeks ago and the fine graving and paving is coming. And Memorial Park concession stand building renovation, bathrooms gutted, uh, stone facade was started and, and the project is moving along greatly. Um, the Parks Master Plan, uh, Hending was uh awarded, the, the tennis courts and the basketball uh courts uh project. And they're working on that as we speak. They're doing one park at a time. Uh, they met with pondering creations regarding the fountain for Rec Park. Uh, we all know if we drive by, there's a lot of uh green algae in the pond, so uh there's a plan being put in place right now to uh alleviate that. And uh, they're working on some drainage repairs in some of the parks and they're putting concrete pads under all of the bleachers. Uh, the pools were opened on June twenty-seventh. We're getting daily and weekly updates from the uh Recreation Director, which is greatly appreciated. They, you know, the, the pools um have been uh plugging along. Some days they're reaching capacity, other days they're not. And just another gentle reminder that the Southington uh pools are operating under a guideline from the Health Department. And uh, the capacity is lower, so the pools are reserved for Southington residents. Obviously, uh, they're allowed to bring one guest. But uh, once again, uh, it was brought to my attention that folks were sharing on social media that they're bringing four or five guests from out of town. And it's just simply not fair to the, the residents of Southington, so let's try to be fair uh for everyone. And that's all basically I have for the Public Works. Madam Chair, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Um, the air raiders for, for Rec Park and I think for Memorial Park, people are calling a lot. I spoke to Annette this week on it, so hopefully get the air raiders in the pond, get that algae.
Right.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, uh sewers.
Um, so the most notable item we had at sewer was, some of you may recall, who were previously on the council, we had a application about a year ago um on Lanning Street to modify the sewer exclusion zone. Um, essentially, it was a, called a stipulated um vote by the sewer committee at that time. Uh, the committee received an update by the applicant's attorney um to uh basically update the co- uh, up committee based on the open space component that had transpired subsequent to the prior vote. Uh, we received an update uh for the new committee, no action was taken. Um, and I do not know if the applicant's gonna ask that to get on the town council agenda, um, but that's where we left it. And then obviously if Val wants to add anything, she was in the meeting too.
Uh, no, thanks, Bill. That's a good report.
Yep, very good. Thank you so much. Uh, town manager's report. Uh, Mr. Shoda, are you still with us?
Madam Chair, you're over, um-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I-
No problem, no problem. I will try to be brief again. Uh, we did uh have our meeting last week. And uh, Town Manager Shoda discussed that the library is gonna be having a soft opening later this month. Town offices are open uh again back on Thursday evenings, back to normal hours. The Calendar House unfortunately is still closed to the public at this time. Uh, Shane Lockwood stated that the uh, the bars were slated to be open soon, but the governor put a pause on phase three. So uh, that's for the, for the, for the most part has been put on hold. Mr. Phillips from the Planning Department said that uh permits are, are backing up. Lots of folks are doing lots of things in their yards, uh, which is great, putting in pools, putting up decks. So they're asking the public to please bear with us. They usually say four weeks to get a permit, but it never takes that long. Um, they, you know, they like to be safe and say that four weeks is a good timeframe, uh, but they've been working diligently uh throughout the weekend, uh, answering emails and calls, so please bear with them because they are very, very busy. Um, Barbara Coleman Heffler was on the call and she said she has visited restaurants and businesses. And uh, they are very uh, uh excited to get back business as usual. Uh, and she did mention that uh, that uh, that the businesses have been very uh grateful for the town for helping and relaxing some, some of their uh, um, you know, some of the rules and regulations so they can get back, back some of the business that they've lost uh over these last few months. And uh, Michael Ricchio has spoken with lots of businesses downtown and they are absolutely ecstatic with what we've done for them uh in closing Lower Center Street and allowing them to conduct uh the, the restaurant pickup on the Upper Center Street. So folks are very happy down there. Um, and then Shane Lockwood stated that all restaurant license and renewals have been extended um to the end of the year, which is a little bit of help for some of the restaurants in town um that, you know, are, they're tight in a pocket right now because of uh businesses that have been uh, has been tough. Um, we did have a discussion on marketing. Uh, we fortunately got nine people to bid. Um, and we had a, uh, we, we, we chose three finalists. And um, we're gonna have a meeting this week to select the person, uh, that's the public relations firm that's gonna be advertising for Southington. Um, and uh, the, we had another, uh, uh, we had a tax abatement um section of our meeting where uh we've received a crest, a request from SignPro requesting a tax abatement and a building permit waiver. Mr. Perillo forwarded the tax abatement language to the committee and we voted on it and it, we voted unanimously to, to um, to send the tax abatement over to the town council, which we have later in our agenda. Uh, we'll talk about that when we get to it. Um, and let's see, what else? I think that's it. We're gonna talk a little bit more about the tax abatement later on in tonight's meeting. Okay? Any questions? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. Thank you so much. Now, Mr. Man, Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Del Santo and I texted during the meeting. We did cut Shane and Annette loose around nine o'clock. So during his uh report, he gave a lot of the uh, what they were gonna give. I'll finish up with it. Um, the big news from the Health Department aspect, as Michael just mentioned, is that we're staying with phase two, we're not moving into phase three. I know we're all disappointed in that. We were hoping uh that on uh July night, July, actually today, July thirteenth, we're gonna move into phase three. Um, but based upon situations uh that are happening all around us, uh, the governor made a decision to stay with phase two for the foreseeable future. So that means, of course, no bars, uh, restaurants will stay at half capacity. Uh, and so we're currently gonna be with that probably uh for the next couple of months. Uh, that being said, that still leaves us with uh the indoor twenty-five and the outdoor one hundred. So that's what's happening on the health part of it. Uh, Michael touched base on the uh, the roads and parks. Annette gave you a um, an update, which is gonna be part of the minutes. And let me just touch base with an email that she gave me, just to update you from what she gave on the last report. Uh, the final uh, this is as of today, Eric and Wyndham uh were both paved today, claimed today and will be blinded tomorrow. Homestead and possibly Matthews will be reclaimed tomorrow. Milling started with Old Turnpike Road. Uh, Mirren Waterbury Road to Atkins has been done so far.
Department had me, do you think he's gonna go to the town hall meeting?
Hey, hon.
What's that?
Hold on one second, Mo.
Sorry?
Mark, go ahead, Mark.
Somebody asked me a question?
Go ahead, Mark.
Thought somebody asked me a question.
No, I think it was in the background speaking.
Okay, and then uh finally with the, with the parks, uh, we're moving, as Michael mentioned, we're moving swiftly with the concession stand of Memorial, the playscape, and uh, as we mentioned already, the um, the basketball and the tennis courts. So that's what they would have said if they stayed till eleven o'clock, but uh, Michael and I decided that uh, we'll bite the bullet and do the reports for them. So I have, Madam Chair.
Victoria, you're on mute.
There you go. Sorry. Thank you, Mark. Um, could I uh, have the town attorney issue report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything on my report tonight.
You mean to tell me that you stayed all night long and you don't have a report?
Well, it was a very exciting meeting, but I have nothing to report tonight.
It was. Thank you, Attorney Taylor. Appreciate it. Um, public communication. Uh, let's open it up for public communication.
Madam Chair, should I, should I open up the uh phone lines?
Yes, please.
If there's any, first of all, if there's anybody on the uh, there's anybody, I got, I have to open up the chat, I apologize.
Yep.
Let me just do that again. Okay. Okay, so the chat function is reopened up now that we're in public communication. If there's anybody on the computer that would like to speak during public communications, please type in the chat box that you'd like to speak and we'll get you in line to speak. Otherwise, Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'll open up the phone lines.
Yes, please do.
Okay, let's do the phones first this time. Uh, is there anybody on the phone line that would like to speak during public communications? I'm on mute. Yes, please go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, yeah, my name is Brandon Brush. I live on one twenty South End Road.
Hi, Brandon.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for, thank you for having the public hearing tonight. Um, but I just wanted to chime in. I was here for the entire hearing, um, and I felt the stance for removing the statue was already very well argued by some folks before me who expressed the case for the removal better than I could have argued that. Um, and I hope you all heard the passionate calls for removal, and I want to express my disappointment in one of the council members who after the hearing stated that he doesn't think anyone's gonna change their mind and you may as well act now. Um, I just want to kind of say, what was the, what was the point of the hearing if we're not gonna think about this and maybe, maybe change our mind after what we've heard tonight? Uh, I think the people of Southington are really passionate about this issue on both sides, and I think they deserve a real discussion between the town council and a real solution. Um, and you know, I think the way last month, when the council kind of hemmed and hawed about whether they were even going to have a public hearing, um, kind of showed where the council stands on the statue. Uh, and I would hope that that public hearing tonight at least opened you up to some feelings and arguments of some voices in the community that are calling for that removal. Um, and I also just wanted to stay and chime in that the folks staying through the meeting tonight are not just uh older folks in Southington. I know a lot of people were saying that this is a generational issue. Uh, and one of the council members made a note that said that, you know, you could see the people in the chat who were staying on after the public hearing and it was, it was a lot of older folks who were calling for the uh, for keeping the statue. But I think there were people from multiple generations calling for both things. There were, there were some young students tonight who were calling to keep the statue. And there were some older folks who were calling for the removal of the statue tonight. I don't think this is simple as a generational issue. And I think to whittle it down to something as minute as that is um not giving the issue i- its due diligence. Um, so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for having the public hearing tonight, but I hope, you know, the public hearing didn't fall on deaf ears. I, I hope that there will be some sort of real uh commitment to the council to discuss this in further detail. Um, you know, whether, whether that's the committee that really drags us out until January, I don't know if that's the answer. Um, but I, I think one of the council members spoke earlier and said that as a whole, uh, she thinks we need to listen more. And I think that's really important. I think this is a, tonight's issue really showed, and you've all said that this is the most you've seen the town get involved in an issue. And I think this is a good opportunity for, for the town council to get more citizens of Southington uh involved in issues. I mean, this is one issue that people got involved in, and I think, uh, you know, if we keep being very public about when these meetings are and making sure every single person knows, I think you're gonna get people coming in and getting more involved in other issues besides just Christopher Columbus. But I think those people need to know that you're taking every issue seriously if you want those people to be involved in our town government. Um, so thank you very much for listening to what I have to say. Um, and I'm sorry I didn't chime in during the public hearing. I just wanted to express, after sharing your thoughts afterward, I just wanted to say, I hope this uh public hearing fell on ears that are willing to fight for change. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the phone that would like to speak? Any call in? Met residents who would like to speak from Southington? I believe I've unmuted all of the call-ins. Okay, so why don't we go to, it looks like Susan has requested to um, to speak during public communication. Susan, the floor is yours.
Hi, thanks, everyone. Um, Susan Zabahansky, Working Street in Planceville. I just wanted to say thank you to all the council members who have heard this, um, heard this. And, and I think we can, and I appreciate everyone on both sides who have said we need to work toward unity because that's all. This town um was founded on that, and I think back when I used to start coming to council members, there was collaboration between both sides. I think we've become very polarized and allowed political parties to separate us and political views to separate us. And I think with election time coming up, this is, I'm seeing it really clearly again, and it's the same thing every time an election year comes up. And we're seeing it in our country, and I think if Southington's to progress, we need to be working together um on both ends, not saving things to last minute to be added and to, you know, to talk to one another. You know, I think, I think there has to be more unification on both, on both parties. I'm speaking from, on bo- on all angles. So I do appreciate everyone who's talked about that today. Um, and I'd like to see more of that because I'm gonna start calling out my own party and, and everyone who's causing division in the town. I just can't stand to see it. I don't think it belongs in Southington at all, and I think we all agree on that. I mean, we elected, the people who we've elected on this council are wonderful people. And we were, and you're elected by the people to be the voice of, of the people, of the town. Um, so as far as continuing to move on, and, and I didn't, I didn't hear um, that the, I did not hear, by the way, from the councils relying to the other caller, I didn't hear from the council saying the council can't, isn't gonna change their mind. I heard that the people who called in aren't gonna change their mind. And I think that's kind of a true statement. I think there's, you know, people are pretty set in their way. So I don't think pushing this off further, and, and, and I didn't see as what you, what you guys said as kicking the can down the road. I didn't see that either. I didn't see that that was what was stated, but I do agree that it needs, it's something that needs to be resolved now to, or within a month or whatever, so that it just doesn't continue to be an object of division in the community at a time. We have so many other um problems that we need to be working on in the town council, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. Mr. Corbino, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, since we've decided-
Okay, well, since we've decided to come back around to this topic again, I, I will say that there were people who presented arguments this evening that were persuasive in, in both directions on the, on the statue issue. And I would like to go on record as urging that any decision that is reached by the council, that it be done so based entirely on fact and that emotion be set aside. I've always believed that emotion is the worst way to come up with sound policy, so taking fact into consideration, leaving feelings aside. Hopefully, we can all, all decide to abide by whatever decision is reached in that manner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Was there, was there anybody else who wanted to speak during public communications? Okay, Madam Chair? And you're on mute, Madam Chair.
What happened? I didn't even touch it. Old business, I don't see any old business. Let's move right on to new business. Item A, scheduling public hearing. Mark, did you want to address that at all?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a, a public hearing, as Mr. Del Santo already talked about, unanimous approval from the Strike Committee. What we're asking for is the public hearing to be scheduled for the 10th of August at 7:00 PM.
Very good. Can I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Thank you, Chris.
August 10th at 7:00 PM.
Yep, that's great. Do I have a second?
No.
Second.
Okay, Chris, Paul Chaplinsky, second in there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Tax refunds, Val, you have them?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the tax refunds that lined in our packet tonight.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. We have appointments for the Cable TV Committee. Mark, I, you have the names, I believe, that we're going to reappoint. We have two that we're going to reappoint today, and one that is still open. Is that correct?
There is, there is one that's still vacant, but Carmella Kimmel and Sandra Brunelli. Carmella Kimmel is a Republican, Sandra Brunelli is a Democrat. That would still leave one more position you'd need to fill. But those were, those were the recommendations. Sandy agreed to serve again, and I did not speak to Mrs. Kimmel, but I know you did, Madam Chair, so I assume she's also willing to be reappointed.
Yes. So, so we, this is just an appointment, or do we need to take a vote on it, Mark?
This isn't my appointment, this is the council's appointment.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve these two individuals for the?
So, Madam Chair, Del Santo.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favors, are you saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good, thank you. We will, for, for someone for the third position, so that's great. All right, I think that ends our business this evening. It's, we still have 45 minutes till midnight, so I think we've covered a lot of ground tonight. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi, second?
Second.
Thank you, Val. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Good night.
Good night.